Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Start with the flag salute, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with a roll call, Sue.
Good morning. We'll have Mr. Haughey.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Woodward.
Here.
Mr. Dematte.
Here.
Mr. Hersaug.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome everyone. Today's planning commission meeting is open to in-person attendance and may also be observed online through the Plaster County website. In an effort to encourage the public to engage in the process, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment virtually today should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using your toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099, or you can call 877-853-5247. And please enter the webinar ID, Please press star six to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not on the agenda, or a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat, or you can leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and assure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. Let's go ahead and move to the director's report, EJ.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. We have five commissioners today, that's good. That's good to see we're working on the, filling the at-large seat. I know there's applications in, that's going through our clerk of the board office right now. So hopefully we'll see something on the board's agenda in the next week or two, or not week, but probably the next month or month or two. So just routine business I'll start out with. So Tuesday's board meeting, we did a, we took an item to the board regarding the Ranch Delaro tree penalty assessment. As you know, last summer, the planning commission and the board supervisors approved a subdivision modification for that project. Construction commenced last summer. After construction commenced, there was some unauthorized tree removal that occurred. It occurred before the board meeting. It also occurred after the board meeting. The board had asked us at that time to come back and assess what unauthorized tree removal occurred on site. And then they asked us to bring back any penalty that should be assessed in that. So that's what we did on Tuesday. Brought that item back to the board. The board, the outcome was that the board did assess fines. They assessed fines, the going mitigation rate for the initial violation. There was also, for the second violation, they assessed a three-times rate for removal of oak trees that, and these are trees that were shown to be retained on the improvement plans that had been removed. So the board unanimously yesterday, they assessed a penalty in excess of $123,000, which is significant. Those fees will be going into the Tree Mitigation Fund and earmarked for projects in the Granite Bay area. There were a couple other components regarding the assessment. There are some trees that were able to be retained on site that we're going to work with a developer to retain those. And then also, there are going to be some additional plantings along Olive Ranch Road. So, you know, quite a significant action the board took. You know, I don't think this was intentional by any means by the developer, however, you know, it all comes down to, you know, onsite project management and, you know, making sure all the conditions are complied with. So fairly significant response from our, from our board yesterday. So, any, any questions on that action? Okay.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like there's, there's a state law that, you know, allows for double and triple detriment, the value of the trees that are taken in trespass. And it sounds like if there was a triple detriment charged, it must have been a willful removal.
So our, yeah, and our Chapter 17 zoning ordinance, or actually Chapter 19 now with the PCCP adoption, includes those assessments for the different levels. Yeah, that second violation, that, that did occur after, you know, the developer was notified that there was other unauthorized tree removal prior to that. So that all came into consideration as part of this discussion.
Okay, yeah.
So on another note, also on, on Tuesday, the board, let's see, where's my notes here? I know our housing team gave an update on the housing program and also a progress report on the 2021 housing element. If you guys get a chance to watch that, or if you already watched that, that was on that agenda. So upcoming board meetings, we do have planning items going that are getting prepared for the April 19 board meeting. These are items that your commission acted on. One of those is the Ridge subdivision. That was at our last meeting. The base-to-base Gondola modification to extend the construction season. And then also, the emergency shelter CUP right here in the DeWitt Center that will go to the board as well. So pretty full agenda for planning anyway, on April 19. As far as planning commission schedule, April 14 is our next meeting, that'll be here in Auburn. We do have a, several items on the agenda. There's one item today that we're going to ask to continue to that agenda as well. That's all for planning commission. I know one of the commissioners has, had asked Clayton to respond to, I think, temporary uses. So I might turn it over to Clayton right now, then I have some more to share when he's done.
EJ, could I get just a question? Could you repeat the comment about the housing element?
So the, the housing program update, there was a, that update was provided to the board by our housing team on Tuesday.
So that is not the housing element, housing code amendments, all that stuff, right?
No, completely separate.
Okay.
Well, yes.
Okay. Another quick question, and I know you've been really busy. But several, probably almost two months ago now, we had a situation developed with the DRC, and I asked Clayton, who did a great job on this, by the way, to kind of assess the DRC as a, an entity with regards to Brown Act. And I have not received any updates on that. I'm not necessarily entitled to them, but I am very curious about it. And at the next meeting, I'll ask quite a few questions about this if it's necessary. But I would really like to get an update on that particular situation. Does not have to happen here or now, but between now and the next meeting, if I could get an update on the DRC issue with regards to the Brown Act, I would really appreciate it. And what I'm really interested in is what your sense is on how that is going to be laid out in county code going forward. And for everybody here, that, that pertained principally to my concerns about the streamlining aspect of the housing code amendment, housing element that went forward. So there is an issue on this, and it will become more apparent as we go forward, I think.
And happy to respond to that, just briefly. So yeah, so it was brought up, you know, the Development Review Committee is included all over in Chapter 17. Historically, that's been just an internal working group between the different departments, land development departments. There was question whether or not that is subject to the, the Brown Act. Our council looked through the ordinance, there's, it's, you know, there's lots of mention of what the DRC does and what they're involved with. We have initiated for, you know, not only the Development Review Committee, but Design Site Review, we're already beginning to hold Brown Act meetings, or I guess, meetings applicable, that the Brown Act is applicable to, to address some of those concerns, but I think.
EJ, if I could step in here.
Yeah.
I'll just clarify a little bit. Yeah, so I did review the Plaster County Code with respect to the Development Review Committee, and I think there are some parts of the county code that should be cleaned up, just to clarify the existing use of the Development Review Committee. So those code changes will be coming forward at some point. But that's, yeah, that's, it's more of a cleanup than anything else. There is no, I guess, issue with the current practice of the Development Review Committee or going forward. But there is some cleanup that I feel like might be better just to make sure that it's, it's clear to everyone what the Development Review Committee's role is.
Would it be possible to get a, to get a copy of that prior to it coming forward to us?
Yeah, so let me, so for the zoning text amendment, it would, it would run the course of any other zoning text amendment. You know, right now, those are subject to going to the MACs. They're subject to the planning commission, and they're subject to the, the board of supervisors for consideration. So we would do our standard practice, as you know, we, you know, your commission has acted on several ZTA's in the past. So it would be, the process would be the same, you know.
Okay, could I get a copy of it?
When, yeah, when, when there's a draft available, yes.
So you don't have a draft yet?
No.
Right, so the changes to the county code and specifically Development Review Committee will include changes to Chapter 17. And the way our code is set up, any changes to Chapter 17 would have to be vetted by the MACs first and then come to your planning commission before going to the board. So there will be public participation, public review of that process as it goes through it. So, but once we get a draft prepared and presented to the MACs, that's when your commission would also be available to take a look at that, those changes as well.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you both.
And just one more clarification, that is not included as part of our overall 2022 ZTA cleanup that we'll be bringing. We're going to do a workshop probably in a couple months. So it's separate from that process. So it will be a standalone zoning text amendment that you guys would like to have. Was there, there was another item, right?
Yeah, so the temporary use permit.
We got sidetracked.
So at the last planning commission meeting, your commission had asked for me to just check and verify on the Tree Pro Tree Service item. Specifically Commissioner Woodward had asked that I verify that this commission was authorized to grant a temporary use permit for the Tree Pro Tree Service application back in August of 2021. So I went back and looked again at the county code and can confirm that, that that was a permissible activity by your commission to grant that use permit. And the reason, the concern that Commissioner Woodward had expressed was because they were operating in violation of the, the allowed uses, whether or not we could then authorize and allow a use permit. And that is specifically allowed in Plaster County Code, Section 1758040, which allows a use permit application to correct, correct an existing code violation. And the fact that this was a residentially zoned district, at least a portion of the property, there is an allowance for a temporary use permit, and that's in Code Section 1756.300. So just to confirm, the action taken by your commission on August 12th to grant that six-month permit was permissible and allowable. And the extension of that permit at your last meeting, the March 10th meeting, was also allowed as well. So I wanted to just clarify that for all of your purposes.
Yeah, for the record, it really pains me to say this, but counsel is correct and I was wrong. And that does happen from time to time.
What was that?
There's no doubt in my mind. There's no doubt in my mind, you'll never hear that again, and unfortunately, the video was on, but.
Can we verify that?
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
I will say this, though, you know, this, I don't think we're ever going to see one of these things again, but it was kind of an interesting, I think, issue. And there are other aspects of this, which I had not discussed with Clayton. And I'm not really going to make a big deal out of this. But for example, the individual who.
You made that baby cry.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. But for example, the individual who, an individual who's running a business and then moves on to property that is not zoned for their business is actually, I think, operating outside of the provisions of that business license. And if you look at the code on business license, business licenses, the authority to kind of enforce those types of things is resident in the tax assessor and not really this body. So that's an aspect of this that we might consider in the future if these things come forward. There's also a difference in tax rate, although it's pretty nominal, I think, based on what I was able to find online, between those two types of properties. And so individuals who might be operating on property that they're not actually zoned to operate on might be benefiting by operating in an environment where their tax rate is a little lower than it would be if they were operating in commercial space. And the other aspect of this that I thought might be interesting for everybody here, my colleagues, is that this particular individual made, this applicant made a point of saying that, hey, you know, I have, I am doing a benefit for the county. I have actually competed for county, county contracts in the past. And so I was able to locate online a 2019 contract, removed 180 trees for the county. That's a lot, I defer to Rich on that, but that sounds like a lot of trees, and it's probably a pretty good-sized contract, certainly a six-digit contract, someplace under 500,000, I'm guessing. But nonetheless, that's quite a bit. And when we allow an individual to operate on zone, on property that they are not actually zoned to operate on, then the county is allowing an individual to benefit from our either inaction or action, while not giving that same benefit to other potential contractors who might bid on those contracts. I think that is not a good place to be. So while I agree from a code perspective that you are correct, and Clayton, I just say this, for us, if this ever comes up again, I think we should think about some of those second and third order effects on this, because it's not, it was not, I think, a real clean situation. Although I do think that we did it right, given the circumstances. We didn't put the guy out of business, we gave him a chance to get things fixed, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think you'll find that every once in a while we do have a temporary use permit that comes forward, particularly relating to highway work on Interstate 80. So, so you'll see more of them coming up.
You had more to share?
So I'm going to completely switch gears now. So, so what I want to do now, I want, I want to recognize a couple of our, our planning staff members. So I'm going to start with Amy Rossig. I'm going to ask Amy to come up and stand next to me. So Amy does have an item today she is presenting. But, so Amy just recently accepted a position with a law firm down in Sacramento. So this is, this is actually her last day here with us.
Does that have to come from us to approve that first?
She, yeah, no telling what will happen today, right? So, I mean, she's been with us over three years. You know, she was, came in as an assistant planner, was promoted to an associate planner. And, you know, just watching her professional development over the years, I mean, she's, as you know, she's taken some really controversial items through this commission and successfully to the board. Just done a tremendous job. She's vital to our planning team. We're going to miss her. I, I know I have the rest of the day to talk her into staying, so I'm going to, I'm going to do it, do all I can. But anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge.
Can we approve a raise for her right now?
The commission could do that, all right? So anyway, I just want to thank you, Amy. We're going to miss you, and we wish you the best of luck. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, this is probably going to come as quite a surprise. And this person was trying to secretly sneak into retirement without any of us knowing, but unfortunately, unfortunately, she had to tell someone, and that was, that was me. So I'm going to ask our planning commission clerk, Sue Colbert, to come stand next to me. Where do I start? I mean, you know, Sue came in, you've been there, what, about six years now?
Almost.
I'm glad she decided to finish her career here at Plaster County. She has a, a long career. You know, she basically stepped into a, you know, the planning commission clerk role is, you know, everybody sees what happens at the planning commission meeting itself and everything that's involved and all the challenges. But really, the real work is what happens behind the scenes. Just from assembling the team, you know, she was part of establishing what we call this core four group, our administrative staff that we also rely on in planning. But, you know, she, she really, you know, started with nothing and built this thing up to where it is, where, you know, processes, procedures, everything that was put in place. You know, Sue, Sue created all this. She's not going to be someone we can replace, but she has left some, quite the footprint. So whoever does come in, they'll be able to hopefully walk in those big, big footprints and keep this going. So anyway, thank you, Sue. You've, I mean, I don't know how I would have survived over the last six years with the commission, so I just appreciate all the work that you've done. And that's on behalf of not only me, but our planning staff, our Cedra staff, and certainly the commissioners. So, thank you, so. So the good news, there is a little bit of good news is here. This, this may be Sue's last time actually at the clerk desk, but she will be at some of our future meetings. Her official retirement isn't, I think, May 1st, end of April, around that time. And she has offered to, you know, help get, you know, help with recruitment and training the next person, which is, you know, beyond what I could ever ask from any employee. So the fact that she's sticking around to do that just kind of shows a lot about her character. So anyway, thank you again, and. And that includes my planning director report this morning.
Thanks, EJ. And just to, just to echo, you know, Amy, congratulations, and we'll miss you. And Sue, you know, you've been, I know how valuable you are. But just, we'll, we'll have you as long as we can, you know. And thank you so much for all you've done. I'm sure commissioners know, we pester you often. And good luck to whoever's going to replace her, because we have a lot of work for her often. So thank you for all your work. Anyone want to say something?
I just want to say thank you. When I was a new commissioner, you kind of held my hand in getting in here. Anytime there is a question, you responded very quickly. And it's, it's just appreciated. And, you know, where there are questions, you set up meetings, and we got the resolution of those issues. And I just have to say, you made this job a whole lot easier. Thank you.
I would say thank you too. You did a very good job and keep us on track. Appreciate that.
Again, thank you, and I just want to mimic what he said. You know, coming in here, it helped to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll try to move on to the other agenda items now. So we'll go ahead and start with opening public comment for any matters not on the planning commission agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda? In person, we have one. Okay, please state your name. Sorry, can you turn on your mic? I don't know, yeah, oh, there you go. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, well, I, I have to start again.
Yes.
I'm thanking Sue on behalf of the public, because you think you call her a lot, we call her a lot. She is so kind, she explains things so clearly. Even if we say, what, she goes back and does it again. I'm really going to miss you. Thank you so much, we're all going to miss you. And thank you for leaving your footprint in our county.
That's great. Anyone else? Anyone online, Sue? Okay, so go ahead and close public comment for items not on the agenda. And we would like consent, any commissioners, would you like to remove a consent agenda item? Anyone from the public? Anyone online? Okay, we can go ahead and move to an action for consent.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We've got a first and a second, we'll do a roll call vote.
I have a first from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Dematte, so vote from Mr. Haughey.
I'm going abstained since I was not at the meeting.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
Mr. Dematte.
Yes.
Mr. Hersaug.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our first timed items. Winchester Lot 35 and Open Space Lot X, conditional use permit and subdivision modification. Members of the public may now raise their hand, press star nine to begin queuing in for public comment. I understand, though, that staff will be requesting this item to be continued, but I'll let you have the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I'll take this item, Chair.
Okay.
So yeah, so we're asking that you continue this item to an open date, just so it can be properly noticed. It did not get published in the newspaper, not, not by our doing, but those things happen sometimes. So I would request that you continue this to an open date, although we do plan on having this on the next, the next meeting.
Okay. First, you didn't want to say that? All right, good.
Does this require a motion?
Yes, this would require a motion.
So I would move that we continue the Winchester Lot 35 and Open Space Lot 10, conditional use permit and subdivision modification until a, what's the proper term?
Open date.
Open date, until an open date.
Second. First and a second, we'll do a roll call vote.
First from Mr. Haughey, I believe that was a second from Mr. Woodward.
Correct, correct.
So a vote from Mr. Haughey.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
Mr. Dematte.
Yes.
Mr. Hersaug.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good, I was thinking we might have to take a break, but we actually, our time is good. And so we're going to continue on to our second timed item. Brookwood Estate, conditional use permit and subdivision modification. Members of the public may now raise their hand, press star nine if you are calling in to begin to queue in for public comment, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Amy, you're going to present on this item.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Amy Rossig with Plaster County Planning Services Division. The Brookwood Estates is a conditional use permit and subdivision modification. Just to give you a layout of where we are in the county, we're in the unincorporated Dry Creek, West Placer area. The project site is located on the south side of PFE Road. It's 8.2 acres in size and is directly adjacent to the Sacramento County line. The project site has a split zoning. It has a combined zoning district of open space with a planned development of two dwelling units per acre. And it also has a split zoning with, of, sorry, residential single-family with a combining agriculture with a combining minimum building site for lots that are 20,000 square feet in size with a combining planned development of two dwelling units per acre. This is pretty consistent with the surrounding zoning districts, because there is a floodplain area that runs through this area, so that's why there is the open space combining district. Just to give you a little bit of background, this project is a little bit older, it has a little bit of history to it. In April of 2006, the project was originally approved by the planning commission for 16 residential lots. About a year later, in August of 2007, the developer came in and requested a modification to increase the number of lots to 17, which is the number of lots that are still proposed to this day. In November of 2015, this was after the housing market crash, their developer at the time requested substantial conformance for minor adjustments to relocating the EVA, swapping what they call a tot lot in Lot 3, just adjusting the locations of those two lots, doing some road realignment and some minor boundary line adjustments. In July of 2016, the applicant at the time came in and requested a two-year extension, and that request was approved. And then in May of 2018, they came in and requested a second two-year extension. And then in May of 2020, I brought forward the third and final two-year extension of time, which was approved, which gives us an expiration date now of May 8th, 2022, which is still the expiration date that stands right now. So as I mentioned, there was a substantial conformance that was approved in 2015. I'd just like to bring this slide up, kind of show you the comparison and kind of show you kind of where we are and how we got to where we are today. The originally approved map with 16 lots is on the left. As I mentioned, there was a approval to increase it to 17 lots. So in the 2015 substantial conformance, it does include that extra lot. The road has been realigned and the tot lot was relocated down to the south side. That's pretty much that for right now. So the applicant has come in to your commission today to request a modification. The image is on the right-hand side of this screen. They're proposing to reduce the lot width and add a rolled curb and gutter, modify the tree mitigation, allow for the installation of an entry-level gate, reduce the setbacks for some of the lots regarding a off-site pond to the left or to the west. And regarding the 100-year floodplain, there's going to be modifications to that. In the image that I do have up on the screen to the right, the lots are highlighted in yellow. And then the kind of what looks like a gray color is the open space lots. And there is a trail that goes through that area, so that trail is going to be relocated as part of this modification. And then they're also adding the entry-level gate up at the top, right near PFE Road. So one of the first modifications is to reduce the road width. The original approval was for 44 feet in width, and this road width would be 40 feet. It would still allow for two 10-foot travel lanes in each direction, parking on one side of the road, a five-foot landscaping, or landscaping strip, and then a four-foot wide sidewalk. And Placer County Engineering Surveying Division has reviewed this and has stated that's consistent with Placer County Plate Standard 104. Applicant is also requesting a modification to the tree mitigation. In 2006, the standard was to do some onsite replanting up to at least a minimum of 50% replanting of the trees onsite. As time has gone on, the county has started to steer away from that mitigation measure, because the survival rate for the trees is very low, and it also has a five-year standing to try to follow and make sure that the trees do survive. So now we're moving towards having an in-loofe paid for these trees that are designated for removal. So the applicant has requested to do a complete in-loofe instead of any onsite replanting. So the applicant is also proposing to install an entry gate along PFE Road. The property lines to lots 1 and 17 would have to be realigned just to allow for this entry-level gate. There is a 30-foot radius that's required in case that somebody gets to the gate and they can't gain access through the gate. There's room, ample room for them to turn around. There's also a requirement that there be a keypad island at least 40 feet back from PFE Road. So that way, if somebody does try to type in their code and somebody comes up behind them, there wouldn't be any backing up onto PFE Road and cause any congestion. The applicant is also requesting a modification to the setbacks for the lots that are adjacent to the off-site pond. Recently, the county adopted the Placer County Conservation Program, which changed the setbacks from ponds. And the PCCP allows for a 50%, 50% administrative reduction from ponds. And the applicant is requesting for the standard 20-foot setback from the property line, because the elevation of the pond is 100 feet in elevation, and they have already shown us the elevations of the proposed building pads on these lots that are adjacent. And the lots in this subdivision would be sitting at least eight feet, if not higher than the pond. And then further, they're proposing a six-foot rockery wall, which will allow additional separation. So they're requesting to remove the setbacks from this pond. And finally, they are requesting a modification to the floodplain. Just going to grab my notes here. So the onsite road is going to be proposed to be called Five Rivers Lane, and it's proposed to cross the tributary to Dry Creek. And there is a 100-year flood hazard area identified on the site. And based on the modeling performed by the applicant's engineer, the roadway crossing would result in a rise in floodwater surface elevation and floodplain limits upstream of the project. The proposed upstream 100-year floodplain floodwater surface elevations would increase slightly after the development is, is developed. So the applicant here has provided this image. The 100-year floodplain limits existing before the project are the light blue line, and then after construction of the project is the dark blue line. And as you can tell, these lines, for the most part, mirror each other and follow each other. There are just a couple of slight areas where the blue line deviates away from the light blue line. But these areas are all in the Morgan Ranch open space area. So the modification has been added to the project to allow for this increase in the floodplain to occur in the open space area. So based on that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the addendum, which has been prepared for the project, approve the conditional use permit modification and the subdivision modification based on the findings contained in the staff report. Available for any questions?
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff or Amy?
I have one. Amy, this is, this project expires 8 May 2022, right?
Correct.
Do I understand it? In order to allow a project to continue, there may be other things as well, but in order to allow a project to continue beyond, in this particular case, 8 May 2022, they, they need to do several things, include, including road improvements, if there are any required, which there are in this case.
Correct.
Prepare and record a final map. They need to indicate some security with regards to bonds, potentially, if it's required. They'll also need to do a subdivision issue, resolve a subdivision issue and that sort of thing. So there are several things that need to happen.
Correct.
Are you certain, or reasonably certain, that those are going to happen by 8, the 8th of May? And if you're not, then what happens to this project on the 8th of May?
So if, I guess I'll start with the latter first. If the project, if they do not record the map by May 8th, or there are some nuances to that, the map doesn't get recorded, then the map, then the project does expire. They could come in within one year and request a reapproval, but if they do do that, then they are subject to all of today's current standards. But we have been working with the applicant. They have been extremely diligent. They've been working with our county surveying team. We have weekly meetings to talk about recording of the final map.
So, but aren't the road improvements supposed to be completed prior to the 8th of May?
Typically, road improvements are constructed and accepted by the county, and then the map gets recorded. In this case, a subdivision improvement agreement would be recorded concurrently with the final map, and that would allow the developer to construct the improvements. But they do have to have approved improvement plans along with that before the final map can be recorded. So the improvement plans would show exactly what the construction would be.
Okay, so we have the authority to approve this project proceeding, but if they aren't compliant by the 8th of May, what happens?
Clayton, sorry.
Sure, no, I can answer that. If, if you don't approve this modification, then by the 8th of May, if they haven't completed it, then their entitlements expire, and they would have to submit a new request. If you do approve this map modification, then I believe there is also an extension of the deadline.
Yeah.
And listed in the conditions of approval, I don't have it, I don't have it with me, but I can look real quick and tell you when it, the expiration date.
The county surveyor has 60 days following the date of the expiration to allow the map to record. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I just want to, I just want to make, I just want to understand that frankly for everybody. I just want to be more educated on this, but, because I've not seen this before. So, you know, it's been around since 2006.
Correct.
Here we are against a deadline for permitting. That's kind of ridiculous, frankly. But nonetheless, as long as, as long as we're going to approve something that ultimately is required to be compliant by the 8th of May and will be enforced, I understand.
And if I could speak up, apologies, I misread this. Yes, by the 8th of May, they still have to complete these, even under the map modification. If they don't have it completed, the entitlements expire.
Okay, so that's, that's really a challenging situation, right? Because they're going to actually have to improve roadways before the 8th of May.
Even if we didn't approve this, then they'd appeal it, which would take them beyond May 8th as well, so.
So. The final map needs to be approved? There is a subdivision improvement agreement possibility, which it's entered into at the discretion of the county, but under that agreement, the county would take security and agree for that specific improvement to be delayed until later, with the understanding that if that wasn't actually constructed by the developer, then the county would be using that security to have somebody else construct it. And those, those aren't completely abnormal. They, they do occur from time to time, but it is at the discretion of the county.
Okay, okay, thank you. You guys have any questions? Okay, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, is Dave here? Is Dave Cook here?
He's online.
Oh, okay, Dave, you want to, do you have any presentation or things to share? I think we have some questions about your intentions, too.
Sure. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Good morning, Chair Hersog and members of the commission. Dave Cook here on behalf of my client, and I'd like to thank you for your time and for staff and all their effort working with us here as we reach this short deadline to get the various design refinements and condition modifications. As mentioned, and the question raised here, the tentative map has no more extensions, and we are working very closely with the survey department and planning staff to complete those last steps, to submit the final map, including the improvement plans and the CCNRs for the recordation and commencement of site work. I, I think that Clayton clarified Commissioner Woodward's question. Typically, we would make the improvements and record the final map subsequent to that, therefore not having to post security. In this situation, because of the deadlines, we're going to do it in the opposite direction and submit the final map with all the completed components, including the subdivision improvement agreement that was referred to, and then commence improvements shortly thereafter. Not, not the preferred route, but again, we are out of time. I've been involved with this project since 2013, and I assisted the then second owner, who picked it up in foreclosure. He was a lender to the original. And then they sold that to my current client. I've also been involved with the entitlements next door on Morgan Ranch. Did that map back in 2007, and our engineer, King Engineering, who's represented, I believe he's in attendance today, Curtis King, was also the engineer for Morgan Ranch. And thanks to their significant experience in the county and significantly in hydrology and drainage in the Dry Creek area, they've been able to help solve the problem, which has prevented this project from moving forward. A 17-lot neighborhood is difficult to make work from an economic and feasibility standpoint, and particularly when you have a significant infrastructure challenge. In this case, it was the culvert for this tributary. But we've been able to confirm that their design provides a cost-effective crossing and has minimal impacts to the upstream common area of Morgan Ranch. And thus, it makes this project economically feasible when included with the other proposed modifications. So we appreciate your time and consideration this morning. Ask that you support staff's recommendations to adopt the addendum, the M and D, approve the modified tentative map, and approve the conditional use permit. But in the meantime, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional clarity as needed. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Cook. I mean, so in, in your estimation, you think you'll be able to meet the deadlines with the expectations that are proposed to you?
Correct. Clayton alluded to it. There are provisions in the MAP Act which allow the county surveyor to deem the final map complete. So the actual recordation does not necessarily have to take place by May 8th, but we have a very narrow window with which, or within which, to comply with that finding. But I'm, I'm confident, based on these regular meetings that we've been having, that we're going to be able to attain that.
Any, any questions for Mr. Cook? Okay, thanks. We'll come back to you if we have more questions.
All right, thank you.
Let's go to the public. Let's open up for public comment. And so if you're online, make sure you raise your hand and, and press star nine to, if you're on the phone. Is there anyone in the public here in person that would like to speak on this issue? No one in person? Anyone on? You have two online? Okay. Let's queue them up.
Ms. Goodwin, you have three minutes. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Julie Goodwin.
Please give your comment.
Yes, I have some concerns about the proposed mitigation to the 100-year floodplan, I'm sorry, floodplain. I do live in Morgan Ranch, and my property backs up to that open space that is being mentioned. Myself and my neighbors would really like to understand how that modification will affect us, affect our property values, affect our potential requirement for additional insurance, flood insurance. I can tell you that although apparently Morgan Ranch has been working with engineers from King Engineering and Dave Cook, we were not aware of any previous agreements regarding that open space. And in fact, most of us were told that there would be no modification to that area. And I'd also like to confirm, what is the FEMA status right now? And I know previously, the development was trying to get an agreement from their property owner to the west of the property, and that never happened. And this seems like it's a last-minute change to push this project through before the deadline. And I worry that it's being done too quickly without the proper survey, without the proper notification of all parties affected.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Mr. Chair, would you prefer that I wait for the second comment before responding?
Yes, please.
Mike F., please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name's Mike Fitzpatrick. I also live in Morgan Ranch. My lot is directly adjacent to the, to the new property in discussion here. I have the same concerns as, as Julie. We were not aware of these pretty radical changes, I would say, to the 100-year floodplain. So I have obviously concerns around that, around flooding. Having lived here for six years and been through, you know, quite a few storms. This last one in October was pretty eye-opening. That, that tributary was a river that was like 40 feet across. So I'm basing my concern off of real experience and what I've seen. And to see that floodplain boundary being narrowed really concerns me a lot. So my question around that is, do these changes have, that the engineering company is proposing, are they, do they have oversight by the county or FEMA? Is there going to be anybody approving those, those changes? And I'd like to understand, I guess, the, as Julie said, the impact to possibly property, our property values, and will we need flood insurance in the future? values, and will we need flood insurance in the future? Yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we're going to close public comment for this. I'd like to bring, uh, Amy back to share first and address anything from staff perspective, and then we'll go to, uh, Mr. Cook.
So I would be deferring to the applicant and their engineer on this issue. It's a little bit nuanced for me. So if that's okay, I'm fine with turning it over to them.
I want to give you a moment. Okay. Uh, Mr. Cook, would you like to speak or bring up your, your engineer is here? I don't know if you know, but he is here, so.
Yep. Yeah, so let me, first, I'll thank Julie and Mike for their comments and their concerns. Uh, it's understandable. We have communicated with the HOA, but the previous focus has been on the trail realignment. But, but I think Curtis can help walk through the nuances as well as the oversights in this process. Again, we're fortunate to have them involved in, in both projects so that they, they've got a good understanding of this, and I think that Curtis can help explain that at the end of the day, it's going to benefit their properties, and it will clarify the fact that they won't need flood insurance. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Curtis and let him walk through and address other specific technical questions.
Okay, thank you, Curtis.
Thanks, Amy. I was just gonna ask for that. Yeah, good morning, everybody. This is Curtis King with King Engineering. Um, I'll give a quick little status with where we're at in the process. You know, last year, we did submit a additional letter of map revision to FEMA. We have addressed all technical comments on that, and we expect that to be a letter of approval issued within the next few weeks. Certainly had the improvement plan approval. Uh, the nature of the change, uh, I think a good overview would be beneficial to the commission. Presently, the effective floodplain actually over tops the backyards of a number of these residential units. And this letter of map revision would pull them out of those backyards. During the initial Morgan Ranch construction and plan preparation, those lots secured an elevation certification, which, you know, is a short process that just documents that the pads are above the floodplain, but not, you know, the footprint isn't clear of it. So this would actually, you know, improve, uh, you know, potentially improve the value of those lots by technically and formally pulling that floodplain limit off the backyards of a number of those lots. Although the lots in question are generally four to eight feet vertically above this water surface elevation, and the majority of the channel is lined with a number of large rockery walls and gabion walls, which are designed to be, you know, flooded and protect, you know, the rear yards of those lots from any inundation by the floodplain. So we're close to FEMA approval. We've certainly been working closely with both flood control and FEMA staff to navigate, you know, the rigorous process that's required as part of any modifications to the floodplain. And we have met all of, uh, the technical requirements, modeling, and, uh, reporting that's required as part of that.
Okay. There was questions about property values and anything to say about that or any issue. It sounds like it improves maybe the current situation, but.
Correct. So as I said, the current effective panel, which the flood insurance rates, you know, and flood insurance requirements are based on currently goes over the top of the back of those lots. Uh, they have elevation certs, so they're not subject to it, but this would formalize and fully contain the floodplain limits in the open space parcel and remove that floodplain, you know, risk, uh, assessment over top of those residential lots. So from that perspective, it would be formally, you know, documented and clearly demonstrated on the FEMA maps that are public record that, uh, that would be an improvement from a development side of things, uh, in a, in a value, potential value increase.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Curtis. It was great. Um, the way I look at it now, even without the Brookwood Estates, that water doesn't flow across that whole property. It only goes into the drainage area that's there currently, right?
Correct.
So it's not gonna back up because of this division, because it already flows to there, is that right? So.
That's correct. The, the, the change, Commissioner Demattei is generally, um, right at the property line, is about three inches maximum, and then it tapers by the time it hits the, uh, the Golden Eagle Place Bridge that was part of the Morgan Ranch phase two.
So with the additional runoff, because now it's going to be pavement and not going to be going into the ground there, will the new curb and gutters are going to be on both sides of this new street improvement or just one side?
It'll be, it'll be on both sides, and that's a, a related topic, but, uh, different, um, the project is also additionally conditioned to provide a no-net increase and mitigate any of that new pavement runoff, um, as part of the project. So there are two, we don't see it here, but if you look at some of the other maps, there are two detention and water quality basins, uh, proposed as part of the project. So per county standard policy, the project is required to provide 90% uh, of the pre-project runoff, so it actually reduces what would be going to the tributary.
So that runoff eventually is going to go into the neighbor on the west side, its pond, correct?
Correct.
And has there been any complaints from that neighbor, uh, having extra runoff into this? I would imagine not, but.
Uh, well, from, from his perspective and the project's perspective, uh, he would experience similar, if not a 10% reduction, uh, with respect to what he's seeing today as part of the project approval, um, based on the detention basin requirements.
And where is the new detention pond being put in?
Uh, it's, if you can see the plate arch, which is the culvert crossing, uh, right there on the new road, it's, the two basins are immediately west on both sides of the creek.
And how big are those?
I'd have to, you know, pull up the maps, but I mean, they're, I think one's maybe a quarter acre and the other's probably an eighth of acre. Uh, but they've been sized adequately, as I said, to provide the volumes for, uh, the runoff reduction the county requires.
And you changed the blue lines closer to Morgan Creek, Morgan Ranch. And with the new changes, that's not going to have any backup problems going back in towards Rio Moon Drive or anything like that, correct?
Correct. It, it has, the, the effect is limited to the first bridge at Golden Eagle Place, and no further upstream effects, um, from the the new culvert that's part of the Brookwood Project, um.
And how big is the new culvert pipe?
I believe it's, uh, gosh, I want to say it's about 20, it's about a, I think, eight, 10-foot rise, and then about, about a 20-foot span, um, plate arch.
Just one?
Just one.
So that should probably ease the concerns of those neighbors.
I would hope so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? You guys, you good? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Curtis, we're, we're gonna move it to discussion with commissioners. Yeah, I, yeah, I closed it. Yeah.
I have no issues with proceeding our motion if there's no discussion.
No, I, Curtis answered my question. Um, just from, you know, having developments in my backyard up on our other land that they put in culverts and they failed, so my biggest concern was making sure that this was big enough. Probably should be a little bit bigger. In my opinion, from what I've seen, things are just sometimes not over-engineered enough. But it seems like there's enough open space to solve that problem if there ever is a huge rain problem. Yeah, I should probably just talk closer. Sorry. Thought I had a loud enough voice already. But, uh, other than that, I think it's, I, I don't see a problem with going forward.
Then I'll make a motion to adopt the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Brockwood Estates project as shown in attachment E and supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
First and a second, we'll do a roll call vote.
Have a first by Mr. Howgie, a second by Mr. Johnson, a vote for Mr. Howgie, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Demattei?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, secondly, I'd like to move to approve the conditional use permit modification subject to the modified conditions of approval set forth in attachment D and supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
First and a second, roll call vote.
First for Mr. Howgie, second for Mr. Johnson, so vote for Mr. Howgie, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Demattei?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, third, but first, Amy, I want to thank you for, uh, your excellent staff reports and, and support throughout, uh, your term here, so going with you guys. Thank you. So third, uh, recommend approving the subdivision modification subject to the modified conditions of approval set forth in attachment D and supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
Do a roll call vote.
So I have a first for Mr. Howgie, a second for Mr. Johnson, so vote for Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Demattei?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair, if we could, there would be appeal rights for this as well.
What's that?
There would be appeal rights for this action.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So we finish that. The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed, uh, within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $641. We're going to take a five-minute break, uh, and so we'll be back at 11:07. Okay? Take a break. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call this meeting back to order, so thank you, everyone, for letting us take a short break. We're gonna move on to our third timed item. Bayside Fields Conditional Use Permit Modification. Members of the public may now raise their hands. Press star nine if you're calling in to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. I just want to say, um, if you are here in person and wishing to speak, make sure you sign up. There's a list, a sign up over there. We'll go in order, uh, and make sure you get your name on there, and we'll call you up to speak. Uh, and Bennett, you're gonna share on this item.
All righty. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. I'm Bennett Smith-Hart with the Planning Services Division. The next item today is the Bayside Fields Conditional Use Permit Modification. Uh, this is located at the, uh, Bayside Granite Bay Campus, which is just east of Sierra College and the city of Roseville. And just north of the Cavett-Stallman Road where the, the campus is. So this is the project site. The whole, uh, Bayside Granite Bay Campus is 34.6 acres, and this project site, uh, where the proposed Bayside Fields is going to be located is 17.38 acres, and this is just north of the existing, uh, church buildings. So here's some photographs looking north and south of the subject site. Uh, as you see, it's mainly grass. Grass in its undeveloped site. So going back to the, uh, the campus and how it originally got here, it was originally approved in 2000. Uh, the proposal consisted of six buildings with a capacity for 5,000, uh, person. The proposed buildings included auditorium, a gymnasium, three multipurpose classroom buildings, and a building that would contain a chapel and administration offices. Other planned facilities included outdoor basketball courts, softball slash soccer field, and a play area for small children. 1,715 parking spaces were planned. Construction of the church facilities was proposed in two phases, allowing for development to coincide with the growth of the congregation. In 2000, the planning commission died, denied the conditional use permit request for the project, and the decision was appealed to the Board of Supervisors. At the November 21st, 2000 Board of Supervisors hearing regarding the appeal of the, the planning commission's decision, uh, the Bayside Church abandoned its two-phase, two-phase plan, uh, to construct a 1,700 seven, seven, one, one, 173, uh, square foot, uh, church facility into six buildings. The church decided to seek approval of three buildings listed in Phase One of the EIR project totaling, uh, 94,500 square feet. The board approved the reduced project, eliminating the three buildings proposed for the second phase. The approval was for a facility not to exceed 94,500 square feet with 883 parking spaces. Um, the board also removed the Bible college use and denied the use of satellite parking. So prior to the hearing, uh, the project prepared an EIR. Part of, at the Board of Supervisors, they certified the Bayside Covenant Church Environmental Impact Report at the November 21st, 2000 hearing. The EIR analyzed the impacts of the anticipated six-building, 173,000-square-foot church project. The project description included additional facilities such as outdoor basketball courts, a soft, softball soccer field, and a play area for small children. As you see on the graphic below, in red, is the location of the sports fields on the conceptual site plan associated with the EIR. Uh, so going into the proposed Bayside Fields project, as you see is the, the master plan for the site. Uh, so it includes two to three, uh, play fields. Uh, so the large field, as, as you see on the east side, the, as the top of the graphic, uh, can be converted into two smaller fields, so that's where the three comes. So you could have one or two plus the smaller one on the west side of the site. Proposes, uh, field lighting, a passive recreation area. This is the area where some of the, the children and youth can go out and play, open play. Proposes a maintenance building and a concession and restroom building. Uh, they have a children's play area, likely be a, a playground, and a picnic area. And the addition of 262 parking spaces. Uh, so the, the entitlement required is a conditional use permit modification of that 2,000 conditional use permit that we discussed earlier. And the modification will allow to two to three play fields with league, league use, field lighting, a children's play area, picnic area, concession, restroom, maintenance buildings, and 262 new parking spaces. Uh, specifically, they are changing condition of approval number two. Uh, any recreational field to be provided on site should be used not after sundown, nor shall it be lighted. The field shall be used, not used for organized tournaments and events or regular league use such as little league soccer, football, and other competitive sports. Amplified sound is also prohibited. So they're, the modifying this condition to allow for lights and league play, uh, the amplified sound is not being modified, so that condition will remain. Uh, so here are the, the two. They're proposing synthetic turf play fields. Again, the larger field that can be converted to two, and the, uh, smaller field. Lacrosse and rugby play is also possible. Uh, they're planting a landscape throughout, uh, so around the perimeter, they're planting on, planting native oak trees and, um, and ornamental trees as well throughout the site, as well as shrubs and ground cover. Uh, these are the proposed, um, uh, maintenance buildings and concession stand restroom buildings, uh, so they're, you know, natural colors and brick on the outside or CMU. Uh, noise, the primary noise source, sources associated with the project have been identified as soccer field activity, uh, landscape maintenance, children's play area activities, and parking lot area movements. An assessment of the project-related park activity noise levels was conducted by Ballard Acoustical Consultants. Noise produced by the proposed project is predicted to satisfy All Paster County stan, noise level, noise level standards. Uh, the condition of approval prohibiting the use of amplified music or public address systems will remain in place. So no changes to that condition of approval. Lighting, the project proposes eight light poles up to 70 feet, uh, in height. Uh, on evenings when lights are utilized, the lights would be turned off by 10:00 PM or earlier. The fields will be unified, utilized up to seven days a week, uh, mainly used in winter time where the days are a little bit shorter. time where the days are a little bit shorter.
Yes.
Map, and also on page twenty-nine, it shows the possibility for four fields, where the original map only showed the big one that can be converted into two, and then the one on the west side, which would only be one. But this one, it has a darker outline, would be a fourth field.
Yes, so the, throughout the initial application, it, it was, the applicant reduced the project from what you see on this photograph, but they were keeping that kind of as a warm-up area, so the lighting, they're gonna keep the lighting on this area where there was a sports field, and that's gonna be kind of the warm-up area before the game. So, they did want to have some lights there, so when the, the athletes are, you know, getting ready to, to play, they'll have a space to kind of warm up before the game starts.
So, no gameplay on that?
Correct, no gameplay.
Okay, thank you.
So, these are the eight lights. So, this is the specific light type, so they're using Musco lighting, the TLC LED fifteen hundred. So, you can see on the, the left side of this slide, this is the, the fixture that they're using, and you can see there's a large shield on it to make sure all the lights directed toward the sports-playing area and nowhere else. So, I did find a park in Folsom that had these exact model lights, so went out and took some pictures of that. So, these are just the unedited pictures from my camera, and shows the, you know, the light field being properly lit with some of the surroundings mainly dark. I, they were, there were some, I believe, some of the, either coaches or parents out there, and they were standing right on the edge of the field, and it was just completely dark, and, and their, you know, the athletes on, on the field were playing, you know, normally, as you expect, you know, from, you know, growing up, you know, I went to these big arena lights with the football field, and it was, it was nothing like that. I drove by a few fields that, at that as well, and they just, they shined so much. This is just night and day compared to the big lights you typically associate with field lighting. This is kind of the new technology, and it's really made. And this park is in a similar location with housing nearby and a, a large, a road on the other side, so it's a similar setting as well. And we did propose conditions of approval for lighting. LED lighting shall be no taller than seventy feet in height. Field lighting shut off at ten PM. Parking lot lighting should be accomplished with fourteen-foot poles. The new parking lot lighting should have photo-controlled, so during the night, it will be reduced by fifty percent when nobody's out there, just to provide some basic security, but not provide additional light when it's not needed. Final lighting plans must show lighting fixtures that generate no greater than two-foot candles horizontal and vertical outside boundaries, and landscape plans shall utilize evergreen trees on the east side of the project to provide additional screening. Same type of evergreen trees they have on the east side now. You see the large evergreen trees they have that do a good job of screening the, the project from the, the homes to the east.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
There are several places in the staff report that talks about proposed conditions, but I guess what my question is, are we assuming that all those proposed conditions have made it into the draft, the use permit?
Yes, probably could use propose or recommended interchangeably, generally, just with my, my discussion. So, you can say recommended conditions of approval. So, what's in the staff report is everything I'm presenting is in the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually, yeah, it kind of raises a question when you use the word proposed, because you wonder then who's gonna decide, but if it's in the use permit, then draft use permit, and that's clarifying it. Thank you.
Yep. So, did want to discuss, there are eight trees within the project area, and that's the seventeen point two acres, as you see partially on the screen here. All of the trees will be avoided except for one blue oak tree, and you, you see the large arrow, red arrow pointing to it. That is a forty-six-inch blue oak tree, or forty, forty-six-inch DBH blue oak tree that is in the location of the parking lot that is proposed to be removed. Wetland impact, so there are potential aquatic resources within the Bayside Fields area. The majority of these resources, just over a quarter of an acre, may not be subject to USACE jurisdiction as they were man-made and are constructed as upland. Remaining point one six-five acre of aquatic resources were previously permitted for a fill and was mitigated at the time of the prove it, approved project's construction. The habitat assessment concluded the Bayside Field Project does not result any new or increased impacts to wetlands beyond what was previously identified in the EIR and mitigated for. Vehicles mile, miles traveled. Senate Bill seven forty-three was signed into law on September twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, and changed the way public agencies evaluated transportation projects under SEQA, or transportation impacts under SEQA. The response, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research updated the SEQA guidelines and recommended that vehicles maltravels be the primary metric for evaluation. SB seven forty-three requirements went into effect July first, two thousand twenty, after the Bayside project was approved. To comply with SB seven four three, Plaster County prepared new threshold screening criteria and associated transportation study guidelines for vehicle maltraveled, and was adopted by the Board of Supervisors December first, two thousand twenty. The county's adopted guidelines define local-serving non-residential development as projects consisting of local-serving non-residential uses unless substantial evidence shows the project would generate significant levels of VMT. Local-serving uses include gyms, health clubs, fitness facilities, public schools, house of worship, civic center, community centers, and community parks. Proposed project would primarily serve soccer players and facilities in Roosevelt and the Granite Bay communities, and considered a local-serving non-residential use. New fields on the Bayside Campus would increase the inventory of fields proximate to local soccer players who would otherwise travel to other fields. The project would allow residents and soccer players to use fields closer to home, shortening trip lengths between home and soccer fields. Regional effect on VMT is a reduction caused by offering closer recreation opportunities to the residents. So, we did consider level of service for consistency with the Granite Bay Community Plan. The proposed project would generate two hundred and fourteen daily trips on a weekday and one thousand two hundred and fifteen daily trips on a Saturday. Compared to the approved single field, the project would increase weekday trips by a hundred and forty-two trips and Saturday daily trips by eight hundred and ten trips. On weekdays, the proposed facility would increase PM peak hour trips by thirty-two. The Saturday peak hour trip generation for three fields would be eighty trips over that forecast of a single field, with fifty more trips on a Sunday. Current Sierra Douglas Boulevard traffic is twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-eight vehicle trips a day between Olympus and Douglas Boulevard and volume on Cavett-Stallman. Between Olive Ranch and Douglas is five thousand nine hundred and ten vehicles trips a day. This proposed project would increase the length of delays at the Sierra College and Cavett-Stallman Road, that's just south of the Granite Bay Campus intersection, which already exceeds level of service C standards during weekday PM peak hours, where current traffic volumes reach a level that satisfies peak hour traffic warrants. The incremental effect of the Bayside Fields exceeds the county's assessment criteria by point one second. This scenario is addressed in the Granite Bay Community Plan Circulation Element, Policy Five, which states land developers' projects shall be approved only if level of service C or the exceptions cited earlier can be achieved on roads and intersections after traffic and approved projects have been added to the system. B, improvements funded by the capital improvement program have been constructed. This will result in a temporary slippage of level of service below adopted standards until adequate funding has been collected for the constructions of CIP improvements. A partial traffic signal at the location is located in the Granite Bay Capital Improvement Plan, and the project will contribute its fair share for its construction through the payment of traffic fees. So, it'll slip for a little bit with the delay, but once the signal has been constructed, it will operate at correct levels. Next, the proposed project would add traffic to southbound Sierra College Boulevard from Miners Ravine Drive to Olympus Parkway, which today operates at a level of service D both weekday PM peak hours and Sunday peak hours. With the restriction of no field use on Sundays before noon, the traffic contribution will not exceed Plaster County's a hundred daily vehicles per hour per lane significant threshold. So, that condition, athletic fields shall not be used on Sundays until twelve, twelve PM or thirty minutes after the beginning of the last morning service. Currently, it is at eleven thirty.
Quick question?
Yes.
Peak hours for this area, what time of day? The peak hours?
Uh, that is...
Like, three o'clock, five o'clock, the, I'm assuming it's somewhere around five o'clock to six o'clock for the evening and eight o'clock in the morning?
I believe it was four to six, is that right? Yeah, four to six.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, going on to the next one, during Sunday peak period, the existing queue on Bayside Drive would affect the first parking lot driveway as inbound traffic from Sierra College Boulevard intended to turn into the driveway could be delayed and potentially create an eastbound queue that extends to Sierra College Boulevard. Traffic study recommended that Bayside Church scheduling matches that begin and end at times that create traffic during Bayside Church Sunday morning services to administer this control, organized field use on Sunday would not start before noon, and that's the same condition of approval that I just read. So, staff did review the project's consistency with the Granite Bay Community Plan and pointed out some of the policies. So, just reading a couple of these, parks and recreation areas shall be planned, developed, and used in a manner which is keeping with the particular residential characteristics of the specific location. Recreation areas shall be located and designed so that access by pedestrians, equestrians, and cyclists is encouraged. Natural open space recreation land within should be carefully managed. Parks and recreation areas shall be designed to limit noise impacts of glare, light, trespass, and overlighting in motor vehicle traffic, both internally and externally. Local recreation programs shall be responsive to the needs of the Granite Bay residents. So, the, the Granite Bay Community Plan goals and policies, continue to work with sports leagues, school districts, and other public agencies in the private sector as partners to share recreation facilities and programming. That's goal number four. Goal number five, ensure that new recreational development is consistent with adjacent land uses. Policy two, where legally appropriate and efficient encourage developer-built recreation amenities. Policy three, continue to work with sports leagues and schools on the provisions of league sports and recreation programs for area residents. For lighting policies, the, the Granite Bay Community Plan does not specifically prohibit sports field lighting, glare, trespass, and overlighting, as mentioned in the Parks and Recreation Land Use Policy number four. However, it mentions the park and recreation area shall be designed to limit noise and impacts of glare, trespass, overlighting, and motor vehicle traffic, both internally and externally. We did take a, a look at the Plaster County Parks and Trails Master Plan, and include general discussion of the, the need for additional sports fields in the Granite Bay area. And our, I believe our Parks Commissioner is gonna be available today if there's any questions in regards to that. With the environmental review, so staff prepared an addendum to the two thousand EIR. The certified EIR was for all phases of the project, including six buildings and recreation area. The environmental clearance for the ball fields has already occurred. An addendum was prepared to revise the Bayside Covenant Church EIR. The analysis concluded that the construction of the proposed project with the addition of feasible mitigation measures addressing lights, noise, aesthetics, natural resources, and hydrology water quality would not result in impacts of substantially increased severity beyond these analyzed in the previously certified EIR. Amount of religious use space in the approved project would not increase, nor would there be any expansion of the type of uses that were analyzed in the Bayside Covenant Church FEIR. No new resources would be subject to impacts, and no increase in effects would occur. So, the, the project did go to the Granite Bay MAC, so originally, it went as an information item on December fourth, two thousand nineteen, and went back as an action item on March second, two thousand twenty-two. Some of the issues and concern raised was the community plan consistency, field lighting and hours operations for the lights in the fields, lack of outreach to neighbors, amount of parking, the project needs and benefits, noise and traffic, issues with current church operations, parking lot security, and wetlands and tree impacts. So, the MAC recommended to the planning commission, your planning commission that approved to, conditionally approved the project, four to two with one abstention with the following recommendations. Lighting be turned off at eight thirty PM, Monday through Thursday, expanding noticing to neighbors prior to the planning commission. The MAC recommended the, the neighbors adjacent to be noticed in lieu of the typical three, three hundred feet note, foot radius for noticing. Confirm whether all wetlands impact have been properly mitigated. Applicant should attempt to save the large oak tree, and that was the forty-six-inch blue oak I mentioned earlier. And post the traffic study online for public review, including cumulative impacts from the Rancho Del Oro subdivision project. So, in response to the MAC, we did extend our public noticing to a thousand feet, and we sent legal notices out to five hundred and ten properties. We did prepare an errata to some of the, the conditions of approval in the staff report, just some revised language. To number two, the athletic fields shall not be used by outside groups on Sundays until twelve or thirty minutes after the beginning of the last morning service, with the addition of, by outside groups, and before Sunday at twelve PM, the fields are only available for existing Bayside Church activities. Twenty B, it was, the conditions were revised, so the parking lot height will match their existing lights at eighteen feet, which changed from the fourteen feet to the eighteen to match existing parking lot light, and LED lights shall be used. Fifty A, there was slightly changed, but it's generally the same, there's a, prior to improvement plans, they will need to provide their traffic fees, and it provides an estimate, an estimated fee here based on the data in the traffic analysis. Condition ADC, this is another one where instead of the fourteen feet parking lot lights, they wanted to match the eighteen feet that they have presently on, on site. So, therefore, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the addendum to the two thousand Bayside Church Certified Environmental Impact Report for the Bayside Field Project set forth in Attachment C of the staff report package. And two, approve the conditional use permit modification for the Bayside Fields Project subject to the modified conditions of approval found in Attachment B of the staff, staff report packet, subject to the findings and modified conditions of approval found in the staff report packet. I am available for any questions.
Okay. I have a question. Let me see, there's a, I guess it's a man-made drainage that runs through the, this area, and also, there's gonna be construction of several impervious surfaces with added parking lots and probably soccer fields themselves. And so, normally, what we've been hearing is that, you know, a project really shouldn't be adding additional water to the watershed, and so, I guess what my question is, how is that gonna be handled in this project?
So, so, the applicant did provide county staff with a, a new drainage plan. So the applicant did provide county staff with a new drainage plan, and it was reviewed for consistency with our standards, so all the drainage is draining. I did want to point out, we do have the detention retention basin right here to collect some of the additional runoff.
So that's the runoff that's coming from other property across the road, across Sierra College, or?
Just the on-site.
On-site longer?
Yes, and I have my colleague in engineering and surveying here as well. The drainage questions might be best for...
Okay, we can get into the drainage question later.
Yeah, I don't know, we have reviewed, they have submitted grading plans, drainage plans, and we have reviewed them for consistency, so that they have provided what we needed to ensure that the drainage is appropriate for the site.
Okay, I guess at some point in time I'd like to hear a little bit more detail on it.
Probably now, probably now.
Can we have the extra mic turned on, please?
Friends with engineering and surveying, Bennett pointed out, there is a detention basin that's proposed on the site that will collect runoff from the new developed area and reduce it to existing flows. The runoff that is coming from off-site through the project area will be collected and conveyed basically through the project area with no detention for that. The project is not required to reduce any flows from that runoff that comes into the site from upstream, just basically that through an underground pipe system and discharging it where it currently discharges today.
Okay, so it'll all be underground, underneath soccer fields, whatever?
Yes, the flow that comes into the site will be collected into an underground system and then discharged, you know, somewhere near where the basin is, back to surface flow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, Bennett, do you know if the lighting at Consumedus River College is the same halogen lighting or LED lighting? Because I was there recently, and I was surprised, we were in the stands, had no light, and the soccer field was absolutely lit up, and it kind of surprised me, so I was just wondering if it's the same kind of lighting.
I'm not aware of their specific setup there.
Okay.
A question about, you said there was going to be an added signal on Sierra College and Cabot-Stalman. Will that allow Cabot-Stalman to go southbound onto Sierra College where it does not allow it now? And will that increase the flow of traffic or decrease the flow of traffic going to Cabot-Stalman going onto Douglas Boulevard so people can head southbound?
You want to take this one, Phil?
Sure, which intersection were you talking about?
So you said, I said that there's going to be a new signal put on Sierra College with the other 1,000 that are already on Sierra College. Will that allow Cabot-Stalman to go southbound onto Sierra College where right now you can only go northbound?
I believe so. No? Okay. Katie from the Department of Public Works is here, so I'll guess I'll defer to her.
Good morning, my name is Katie Jackson with the Placer County Department of Public Works. The signal that we're contemplating at the intersection of Sierra College Boulevard and Cabot-Stalman is a partial signal, so it would maintain the existing turning movements that are there today, but would not allow a new turning movement. You're talking about the left turn from Cabot-Stalman to Sierra College Boulevard South. That's not, that would not be included in the signal. That's a partial signal.
If it's a partial signal, it would not stop traffic southbound on Sierra College past Cabot-Stalman. It's only for a right turn exit to egress out of there.
Right turns, and it would also stop the northbound traffic on Sierra College Boulevard so that the southbound lefts can turn onto Cabot-Stalman.
What's the distance between Douglas Boulevard and that? Would it back up traffic in front of all those businesses and hinder crossing Douglas Boulevard? If they're both red or green at the same time, and, you know?
We could coordinate the signals so that we can clear the queues in between the signals before it stops and allow sufficient green time for all the traffic demand to get through on Sierra College.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, just a few questions, principally for you, Bennett, I think. On this map, could you describe the topography of the homes that are across Sierra College? In other words, what's the topography of those particular homes in terms of the layout as they proceed up further away from Sierra College? Is it a hillside?
So these homes right here?
Right.
Yes, so the topography increases as you turn left on, that's Miners Ravine, you'll go uphill?
So as you drive by that, and I drive by this every single day, there's a retaining wall there, or actually a kind of a wall there that works very well for the first series of houses there for their first floor. However, if you look to the right or left, depending on which way you're going on Sierra College, you can actually see the second-story windows of that first tier of homes. And then if you go further up that hill, you can see basically the entire set of first and second floor windows. So would you agree or disagree that those homes will have virtually direct line of sight, almost regardless of any kind of shielding that you might put up there with trees, at least early on anyway, right onto those fields?
I would agree they'll be able to partially see the fields. I've driven up the road just with no significant change in topography, you know, it's not like a house here, then a house here, then a house here, so it's going to be, you know, likely partially blocked by the roof in front of them.
Yeah.
But there was likely some view of the fields they'll have from the second story or elevation.
Okay, you made quite a few comments about the Granite Bay Community Plan. Do you know if there are any lights at other parks in Granite Bay at all? Obviously, there are lights associated with schools, but are there any lights at other parks, lighted, you know, lighted fields in Granite Bay? And if you don't know, I'll tell you.
Yeah, I don't have the information in front of me.
Okay, there are not. Could you elaborate a little bit, and this may be an engineering issue, hydrology issue a little bit? I'm curious about this, the oak tree, and I've been told that this is actually an oak tree that would be affected by water drainage. It's probably a couple hundred years old, been sitting there for a long time, a lot more than I have. So my question is, is that oak tree actually affected by the hydrology plan, or is it affected by something else that's causing it to be removed?
So the location of the tree as it stands right now is, I could probably generally point in the area, the tree is located about right here, so just from, you know, looking from above, the location of the parking lot conflicts with the location of the tree where it is right now. Additionally, the fields, or the location where the fields are proposed is kind of a little bit of a valley, you know, you have the water drainage running through the middle because it's kind of at the bottom here. So where the parking lots are built up, it's a little bit lower than that, so that area will need to be filled in, I think about four feet to build it up to get to that parking lot.
Okay, so for engineering, I think, is the oak being removed because the parking lot is going in, or is the oak being removed for other reasons?
From our perspective, the oak tree is being removed because of the parking lot.
Okay, so Bennett, trying to find these numbers. The project includes 262 spaces, parking spaces, right?
That's correct.
And yet, in the staff report, it indicates that, the study indicated that between 115 and 176 parking spaces would be required to meet the requirements for these fields. So there's a difference of, you know, potentially more than 100 parking spots, and we're going to remove that oak tree, I presume, in part because of those parking spots that are extra. So can you explain the logic associated with removing the oak tree when you in fact have 100-plus extra slots potentially in this parking area?
Gotcha. So our zoning ordinance does not have any parking standards for these type of recreational uses, so we basically had to look elsewhere to kind of see what the need could possibly be, so one of the areas we looked at was the ITE, the Traffic, International Traffic Engineers Manual, I might say that right, but Traffic Engineering Standards on a Sports Complex and how much parking they needed. So that one sentence was based on that, but Bayside did do some math, this is something the applicant could probably elaborate a bit more on, but they did some math and consideration before they came out with the 262, I think based on their calculations, looking at sports fields and things like that.
Okay, all I'm saying is that we rely on these reports in the staff report quite a bit, so it seems to me kind of incongruent logically to say, yeah, that staff or the report indicates this, but we're not going to pay too much attention to it, we're going to rely on the applicant, although I do look forward to hearing their views on that. So it's 262 versus one at the high end, 170 somewhat spaces, and then that result of that is killing an oak tree that's been around for 200 years, and there are people who actually are particularly interested in that, so it just seems a little strange to me that we would wind up doing that. Different issue, potentially anyway, obviously we need to listen to other things. Can you confirm that there are no new access points, entrance points, or exit points to the Bayside, to the Bayside campus as a result of this project? In other words, the traffic flow that currently exists at Bayside is going to remain consistent with what's currently going on at Bayside?
That is correct. So if you see on the map here, they have existing, I believe, Bayside Drive right here, so no changes to that road, and, you know, off-site on the south side of the campus, they're not proposing any changes, so just adding the fields as you see here and the two parking lots as we see on the master plan here.
Okay. In the condition use permit, as I understand it, we are advocating for 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and then to 10:00 on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Could you explain the logic associated with Sunday night operations to 10:00? Are they not, isn't Sunday night actually essentially a weeknight in many ways since kids have to go to school on Monday, parents have to get up and go to work on Mondays? So what is the logic extending the hours on Sunday and not extending the hours theoretically on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
So the 8:30 discussion came as a recommendation from the MAC. They did not agree with 10:00, but wanted to have a realistic compromise because, you know, Saturdays are an important day for athletes to play, because, you know, kids are off work and they're not going to church, so it's a full day. But originally, the proposal came in, and what they are requesting is 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, so this mirrors the, our noise ordinance of, you know, quiet time at 10.
So the proposed use plan ends at 10, not at 8:30, as the MAC suggested for Monday through Thursday, is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. The last thing is, question about the concessions, can you elaborate a little bit on what will be done at the concessions for, you know, in other words, what is that going to look like?
Yeah, so it's the concession stand restroom building, and just to point it out, that'll be right here, located next to the playground and the fields, so it'll just be basically a small roll-up door, and they'll just have pre-made, you know, like chips, candy bars, things like that, that folks can buy while they're on the fields.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Bennett, going back to the lighting and the elevation, those houses across the street on Sierra College on Olympus Drive and all that, is not their elevation, you know, about the same as 70 feet? Some of those two-story homes where they're going to have direct line of sight at 70 feet, because it seems like those houses are, especially the first row and maybe the second row, are in direct line of sight for those people in their second story to be looking directly at those lights. Has that been brought up or concerned by those neighbors?
I don't think that specifically, the elevation, I did want to say, and I go back to the slide, these are, just wanted to show a graphic of the proposed light itself, just give a visual of my discussion. So you see the light fixture on there, so, you know, it is likely just due with the elevation change, you know, they're getting closer to eye level, but as you see, you know, the bulk of the fixture itself is the shield.
Right.
So the light's really directed down, so this is the same lights at the park in Folsom, so obviously I was taking the picture from the ground, but, you know, as you get closer, you know, you might, there might be more shielding from that level since it's all going down, you know, so being at a higher elevation might reduce what they can see in terms of just being able to see the light that's turned on.
When I was out there the other day, I'm standing where that light pole would be, and I'm looking straight across Sierra College, and, you know, 70 feet is probably right approximately to where the people who live across the street's second story is. So I would imagine that that's going to be direct line of sight for them in their bedroom.
And there's also on Sierra College is lit as well, so there's light poles that might be brighter just due to standards by Public Works or whoever, you know, they might have some really bright ones for. So those lights might kind of draw out.
But those lights are not as tall as some of those homes and are not at 70 feet.
I'm not sure how tall the lights are, but I just know that it's on a lit corridor between the homes, there's a lit corridor with, you know, traffic and everything.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Some of my colleagues asked some clarification I was looking for, but I have a couple of additional items. I think that these parks might increase some foot traffic, and, you know, accessing the trails and crossing roads and streets, and so does the increase in foot traffic, is that going to account when you're calculating the level of service? How crossing an intersection might pause that traffic a little longer? Was that calculated in LOS?
I am not sure. I will look back to, yes, maybe Katie can give a response to the foot traffic levels.
Hi, Katie Jackson with Department of Public Works again. The traffic study was done for the project, and they can take into account an increase in pedestrian activity at the signals, more calls on the pedestrian push button, more delay for those vehicles that are stopped at the signal while pedestrians are crossing. I don't know offhand how many pedestrian activations they modeled in the traffic study, but I would imagine it's taken into account in the technical details of the analysis.
Okay, great, and then you could decide who answers my last question, that's the bike lane improvement. Can you go over how that's going to change along Sierra College? Is there a bike lane change or some adjustment? Okay, so currently, can you explain where the bike lane is and how it's, if there's going to be increased foot traffic? If there's going to be increased foot traffic with bikes and cars? I'd like to know how that's going to be structured and and traffic's going to be monitored along Sierra College right there.
Well, I I guess I'll try to answer that. I I'm not quite sure of the question, but so the the existing facilities along Sierra College will remain. There will be, maybe this will work, there there will be some improvements to pedestrian facilities along Cabot Stallman here, along Sierra College here. And there is the continuation of a pathway between the two as well. But no facilities along Sierra College will be modified with the project.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, this is probably kind of a engineering question. But in the staff report, there's some discussion here about peak times on Sunday and potential fixes for that. One of them, of course, is to limit the use of the soccer fields on Sundays. But there's another recommendation here that's talking about blocking inbound traffic temporarily, traffic controls implemented, narrowing the driveway to fourteen feet. And I assume the driveway is the road that goes off to Sierra College into the campus? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so and also eliminating left turns into the parking lot. And so maybe you could describe that on the map exactly what this one is talking about? Or is that one, is this one the one that was implemented in the use permit?
Yeah, so this is the the condition of approval. I think I think the intention was to avoid conflicts with the folks driving for the soccer fields and driving to attend the church. So onsite circulation conflicts with that.
Yeah, Bennett, I'll I'll try to describe it a little bit further. It's it's regarding this driveway encroachment right here to the parking lot. And so as inbound vehicles come in, if there are any issues with waiting to turn left from potentially people coming from the church that are coming out, queuing back behind that, we we included a condition to limit left turn lanes at this intersection so that people wouldn't wait to turn left and potentially cause a backup out onto Sierra College. So the applicant can, you know, put some cones up maybe on the this Bayside Drive main encroachment to prevent prevent left turns. And they can manage it that way if there's any any issues.
So there also there's discussion about making it fourteen feet.
Yeah, so right now, currently it's twenty-five feet wide, which would allow two-way traffic. If you did not, made it only an exit, an exit only and not allow left turns in at that location, then we would narrow that width down to, you know, something like fourteen feet. And and they could do that through the improvement plan process if that was something that they wanted to.
That's a left turn in off of Sierra College?
No, not off of Sierra College. It would be a left off of this Bayside Drive, I'll call it, this onsite access road, a left into the parking lot.
Okay, so.
They would, they, there's a potential to limit that right here so that you could not turn left from Bayside Drive into this parking lot.
Oh, okay, from that driveway?
Yeah. Yeah.
So how do they get in the parking lot then?
Well, there's another access point up in this area here.
Okay.
Yeah. So that might be a full access and potentially this is restricted maybe at certain times to just an exit.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I understand now, thanks.
All right, thanks.
So is that, so is that a new entrance into that parking lot?
That's a, yeah, this is a new parking lot being proposed with the project.
There's nothing.
And so.
Right, but it's off of Cabot Stallman. It's not integrated. It's not, is it or is it not off of Cabot Stallman?
No, there's no access to Cabot Stallman.
Okay, I'm sorry then.
I have one more question about the water. There's going to have to be, you know, new pipes and all that. Is there enough, I don't, you guys did a water study. If there's, is there enough water that is going to be collected in that new drainage area to recycle, to irrigate those fields and keep it green instead of putting synthetic grass? It's going to be hotter, probably not as fun to play on for kids and kind of neat. Keep it natural grass instead of synthetic grass, which would probably reduce the temperature and probably some issues with kids playing on turf instead of natural grass?
Yeah, I don't know that I would be able to answer that. I might have to defer to the applicant or the applicant's engineer on the quantities of, you know, irrigating natural grass. And if there was enough water that they could somehow capture it and try to do that.
And would it also help with drainage to seep back into the soil by having it natural grass instead of synthetic, where it's going to run off and have to be captured?
Yeah, I think obviously natural grass probably has a higher infiltration rate than a synthetic turf. However, again, they are proposing a detention basin for any of that additional runoff that would come from turf. They would capture it and hold it and then release it at the existing levels.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Chairman, if I may, I just want to make one clarification regarding the field lighting. Okay, so condition number eighty-B requires lighting to be shut off at ten PM. So there was a question, talk about eight thirty, whether or not that, you know, that's something the applicant wants to bring up. We want to hear from them, but just so you know, it is that condition when that comes up for discussion later. You know, if there's going to be any such change of the time or and if you want to, you want to add to that, Clayton?
Okay.
Or do you have a separate item?
Add a separate topic. I did just want to mention that there were errata to the conditions of approval that were presented during this presentation. The commission has also received paper copies and there are paper copies in the back. If any members of the public want to take a look at those as well.
Yeah, we do have the errata. Thanks, Bennett. I I'm going to invite the applicant up. Is that going to be John or George? Okay, George.
Chairman Herzog, members of the planning commission, my name is George Phillips. I'm here this afternoon on behalf of Bayside Church on the proposal. I really am not going to get into too much of a presentation part of this because of the thorough job that Bennett did. Maybe just perhaps focus initially on some of the questions that have been raised by commissioners. And then out of respect for those in the room and those on Zoom, I'll sit down and allow the public to speak. So in response to some of the the questions that have come up from the commissioners, I'm going to ask a couple of people to help me out on that. One is Casey Feigert, who's the project civil engineer. And the other is Bob Crookham with Musco Lighting. So we can address perhaps some of the the tree issue, grading required for that, the the circumstance surrounding that with Casey's comments and any other of your questions that might deal with the engineering. And then I think Bob's comments could be helpful in understanding the lighting, its visibility from off-site, et cetera. And also I think Casey could have addressed the water issue that Commissioner Demete just brought up. On the parking calculations, just to assist with that, the concern was raised about the the applicant coming up with with the number. As Bennett mentioned in his presentation, parking ratios are not in the I T E manual or the county does not have a standard for parking for recreational facilities. So what we were challenged with is to come up with an estimate of the need for parking, being sensitive to the issue of wanting to avoid any spillover parking, particularly on Cabot Stallman Road. In other words, to keep the parking on the Bayside site. And so what we had, we looked at were kind of worst-case scenarios, all three fields being utilized, teams that are on the field and teams that are arriving to play next. And then doing calculations of how many players that involves, coaches, et cetera. Then doing a deduct from that on a percentage of vehicles that might have multiple passengers and come up with a calculation. So that is how we came up with the number of two hundred and sixty-two additional, understanding that we would be utilizing some of the existing parking on the Bayside site. So our intent was not to overpark the site, but also to be sensitive to neighborhood and avoid any spillover parking in in the neighborhood. With with that, I'm going to ask Casey to come up and address the the tree circumstance because of the grading and what would we, what would be required to save that tree? And then the likelihood of its survival, given the things that would need to be done to save it. And then I would also ask him to address the water consumption issue. The one comment I would have on the drainage, just to make one clarification, because I I think I'm right. The project does have to address both stormwater management and also water quality features onsite. And I think the comment was made that we have to manage our flows to make them equal. I believe the Placid County Flood Control Manual requires that we design it so that the post-project runoff is ninety percent of the pre-project runoff. In other words, we actually have to do more detention in managing the peak before it leaves the site. So it's it's not equal in terms of what comes on. I think the the accuracy of that statement is what comes offsite, what comes on our site from offsite, we release that so it's equal. But we are required to reduce our own runoff and manage that peak before it goes into the system, if that makes sense. So again, I'll ask Casey to come up first and then if I could ask Bob to come up and talk about lighting, because obviously that's going to be a big issue for all the folks that are concerned about that.
A quick question, how many current parking spots are at the campus now?
Eight eighty-three.
Thank you.
So Casey?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Casey Feigert, T S D engineer. George has asked me to talk in a little more detail about the tree. The tree that we're talking about, the existing oak tree, is right here where the proposed expansion of the parking lot is going. That tree currently sits closer to seven feet below the existing grade, right adjacent to it. Plus actually down in a hole. So to, in order to save that tree, we would have to build a retaining wall, a full circumference around that drip line. And that would, that tree would be sunken down about six to seven feet below below the asphalt grade of the proposed parking or even the adjacent parking that's there today. So with that tree down in that hole, then we have drainage drainage issues in terms of additional water getting into there. How do we get that water out of that hole so the tree doesn't get overwhelmed with additional water? So those are the bigger concerns with that oak tree in that location. So hopefully that helps answer some of those questions if you guys have more, throw that out there.
Doesn't that tree sit at grade now with the current field?
It sits at grade, which is, like I said, about seven feet below the existing road that's right here. There's a pretty good slope coming off of this
Right.
down to that tree, yes.
So that parking lot was, I would assume, was built up to accommodate that?
The existing parking lot in some areas was built up, yes.
But the tree right now, from what I remember, was just there three days ago, sits at grade with the current conditions as it is today.
As it sits today, yes.
So are they planning, I was told that it was going to stay a swell, like lower elevation? So how much dirt is going to be brought in to fill in that it's going to be below the existing grade today?
So yes, the, to get this parking area at grade, yes, additional fill has to be brought in. That's the reason why for the retaining wall around that oak tree.
So.
If the oak tree were to remain.
So will be level with the current parking across the tree? Or is it going to be, is the new grade going to be lower?
Is going to be at, is going to be closer to grades here because these are one-way drive aisles to kind of keep the flow of the parking. We have to meet grades at the existing on, I'll call it the west side. We have to meet grades on the east, on the south side and then the drive aisle on the east side. So we're connecting all those existing points.
So you'll be able to get.
So that grade does come up.
So you'll be able to get from the existing parking to the new parking?
Yes.
Without having to go around that oak tree?
Yes.
Correct, okay. All right, thank you.
Just a quick follow-on question to Mr. Demete. Really, and obviously you haven't done any study on this, so I understand that. But if 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 we were going to save that tree, as you as you kind of, you know, imply it's pretty complicated to do it, but if we were going to do that, how many parking spaces do you think that would cost?
In this general location, I looked at it closely yesterday. There was approximately thirty to thirty-five parking spaces that would have to be removed.
Okay.
In order to so.
And as as Mr., so we have the, we've already discussed the difference between what you think is the required amount and then the number that you're asking for. And the idea is to help prevent any possible overage on to Cabot Stallman or elsewhere. Certainly good points. And yet, as Mr. Demete pointed out, you have eight hundred and eighty-three other slots apparently already. And the current proposed conditional use permit allows for operating these fields, at least on Sunday when you're at peak capacity at the church, only outside of those church hours. So wouldn't it be logical to assume that there are going to be plenty of over, overage parking available in existing church slots?
I'll let the, our, I'll let the owners kind of answer that question. You're asking if it was logical, I, as a civil engineer, I don't look at logic. I look at numbers, unfortunately, and
Sorry.
I go off of codes.
Good point.
So, sorry. So there's the parking. I think that the other question had to do with, was the possibility or or taking this from synthetic to a natural grass? The amount of water for natural grass for this square footage cannot be maintained within the the site and the volume of water we get onsite throughout the year. As you're seeing with the the rains that we've really not had over this last year, we would not have the the volume of water that would be needed to water that, this as a grass field. July is the the peak for watering of fields. And we would have to hold the water from winter time to July. And that's that's quite a long time of holding water. So in the county, as part of the drainage component, we can't hold water, keep water standing for that amount of time.
It seems like that stays pretty green almost year-round. It seemed, well, maybe not year-round, July, August, I'm sure it's probably as golden brown as could be, right?
It is very brown, yes. And you're talking about the existing area in this area or that, just that? So the part that would stay green and it's, there's some drainage that kind of runs through here from the existing properties to the east. And that is usually from their irrigation runoff that may come through there. So there's a a small trickle, if anything. Most of the time during the summer, this is completely dry.
Would it be possible to hold, if the county said, yeah, you can hold water year-round in a pond or what have you, makeshift to irrigate that in the summertime? Would that be possible?
For everyday watering and the heat hit the peaks during July, did that amount of water to hold through that entire timeframe? Yeah, would be a little bit too much. I wouldn't, I'd have to run the numbers, the well-oaked that the landscape architect runs for that. He would have to run all that. And I believe we would have to even run that through P C W A because they're the water purveyor out here.
Right.
You'd have to have supplemental water to go with it.
Yeah.
And right now they're not pushing for.
As a farmer, I know how much water it takes to keep something green.
Yeah.
I I know it can be done because I've had to do it myself.
Sure.
And not just on two acres, more like a thousand acres. So just my thoughts, because I'd like, you know, see as much natural stuff there as possible. And I've had feedback from parents and kids that say, hey, look, we're tired of playing on synthetic fields. It's, you know, not probably the safest or funnest stuff to play on. We'd rather play in the mud. So just comment from that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anything else?
Then I'll ask Bob Crookham to come up real quick and talk about the lighting issue.
Commissioners, staff, my name is Bob Crookham. I'm with Musco Sports Lighting. I think that the the question that was asked about the height and how that relates to neighbors and and what's all going on with that. I don't know if you could pull up the the photo that you have of the fixture? Yes, so. Yes, so when LED was introduced, what it did, it allowed us, which we were already on a cutting edge of being able to control light. And you do that by trying to hide as much of the light source as you can. When LED was introduced, because we're now dealing with circuits, lighting diodes, we're able to hide the light source, the lighting diodes underneath the visor. So in order to light a field and light it appropriately, mounting height is crucial to being able to get the proper control and hide the source. So if you're the neighbor, and my fixture goes like this, and if you can't see the diodes, if you can't see the light source, then you're a happy camper. In addition to that, we also ran, what we do is we run the spill values. And that has all gotten a lot better, too. So typically, you used to run a spill line across the property that would show you a horizontal or a vertical reading. A horizontal is a flat reading, a vertical reading is taking the meter back at the brightest source. So that's what we would use. Today, we've developed candela and being able to read what candela is. Candela is the measure of brightness coming off the fixture. So we can actually model exactly what that candela will be on a property across the street. So if you live in the third house or whatever, I can tell you exactly what candela will be affecting your property. And I think on those scans that are in the packet as well, which would be, actually, this slide here, if you see that one?
If we go back to the PowerPoint.
Yeah, is that on the PowerPoint?
If we go back to the PowerPoint, we have that.
Yeah, yeah, if you could do that, the PowerPoint. Oh, there you go. Okay. This here kind of gets into a traditional luminaire. Your useful lights going down onto the field, your spill light, the light that's being cast into the neighborhood, that's the light that's going up in the air that the neighbors would see. So in this model next to it, it shows what an LED system looks like when you can see the LED diodes and you're not controlling the light. And the next photo of the Musco pole is showing how we're hiding the light source where you can't see that lumen intensity. And then what this does, this is a representation of technology. We call it the evolution of light. And it shows from where light came from the nineteen seventy-seven, nineteen seventy-seven, and our developments all the way up to two thousand and five, which was still, is where we got into the HID, or there was still HID there, and you could see how we had developed in the visored system. So we're hiding more of the light source. And then today, we're dealing with candela. So this is representing a pole with fixtures, and it's at a hundred feet away. And the candela level there is seven. So that just goes to show you how much that light can be controlled and hiding that light source. So what you see from a distance, and that's modeling what one would see. And then in reference to your fields, this is a couple of pictures of some fields here in light cutoff. And you can see how the lights cut off around the field. And then, these are the models that we created, I think that they were in package. So, yeah, so what we do is we go across the street to the property lines. And you can see the numbers, all the numbers that are along the side there. So what we do is we run, along those property lines, we run horizontal, vertical, and candela levels. So the numbers that came out on those, when we did that, the horizontal numbers are all zeros, the vertical numbers are all zeros, and the candela numbers, I think on, I don't know if I can read it up here. Yeah, here's the, these numbers along here. And then it would be the numbers that are run on this property line here as well. Yeah, so.
The horizontal numbers that are zero, that is from, that's from, yeah, okay, I got it, thank you. I answered my own question.
Yeah, and then, and then the, so for example, the numbers that are run along that side of the field there, that you're seeing those small numbers in the candela. Right here. So the candela, we had an average, the average was fifty-seven, and the maximum was two hundred and seventy candela. So fifty-seven and two hundred and seventy candela, when we're looking across there, we basically see no light source. So when, I think within the report, and when you get into the criteria set by IDA, and I think what is in your report says that candela can't be anything more than ten thousand. So as opposed to ten thousand at that property line, we're dealing with a hundred and twenty-five candela and an average of fifty. So almost zero light. And then for people up higher on the second floor, it's even less. So we can run those levels at three feet, fifteen feet, twenty-five feet up. So the higher you go up, the less, because the visor's even, the worst-case scenario is going to be right at the ground. As you go higher, it'll even be less than that. So hopefully that helps answer.
Does anybody make a portable one that could be brought out there to demonstrate to people who are concerned about this? You know, you can rent portable lights, right? Is there one that's out there, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, that could be brought out to the site, set up where this light is proposed to be, say nine o'clock at night? And kind of go get your numbers if they truly are zero, not on paper, but physically done in like a lab situation, right?
Answer the question, yes, you could. I don't think you would need to. I think there's enough of the product out there in similar type situations where you could go locally to a field, whether it be in Roseville.
Yeah, but the same people aren't going to go seventy feet in the air if they're sitting at their two-story house across the street that's here at college and get the same experience. So what I'm trying to do is maybe eliminate the questions that are going to be from the people who live across the street and put it in a scenario before it gets approved to say, yeah, look, this is truly what's going to happen. I mean, yeah, it looks good on paper. I'm just playing devil's advocate here, if I live in that house and this board passes that, and then it comes up and all of a sudden now it's not true fact.
To answer the question in the best way is that when we do the modeling and we do the performance, so all those numbers, those are guaranteed numbers, that's what it's going to be. And it's our guarantee, so when we do it, we guarantee it. And there's ways of, there's IDA actually has a program by which they come out and they will actually measure and evaluate designs and do that same thing. So when we run the numbers, we also have candela meters that we can go out and actually prove that performance. So what we're putting on there is what we're going to deliver.
Okay.
And then, in reference to your question, it's just, if you had to come out and try to set up a pole and to do all those things, that's a pretty expensive undertaking to try to coordinate that and make all that kind of thing happen. And in terms of, you know, if you went over to, say, Folsom Economy Park, which is fairly close by, you could go a hundred, you know, the same distance from it and see a pole that's basically seventy feet and kind of get an understanding of what that performance would be and what you could see from that distance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
What level of candela is coming out of the bulb?
Excuse me?
What level of candela is coming out of the bulb?
The candela levels will, it's the, what happens is, so when you run the photometric report, the candela level for any given photometric fixture will change depending upon. If we had no visor on it and you just looked into it, you're probably at a hundred and, you know, sixty thousand.
Okay.
Hundred and seventy thousand, yeah.
Does it also measure the reflection off of the field? And so those candela meters will also capture the light coming off the field, maybe not from just the bulb, but what's coming back off the field?
It's going to pick up anything that's creating that brightness when you do your meter reading.
Okay.
So, you know, is there, is there light that's going down on the field and bouncing up off the field into the sky? Yes, there is. It's like a very small percentage, but yes, there is, and that stuff you could measure. But you'd have to get up a hundred and fifty feet above the field to.
Do you guys have a guarantee to limit that as well?
Yes.
You do, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So in terms of our presentation, I think I'd like to end it here and then reserve time after the public comment if there's additional, we anticipate there'll be additional items and questions that we'll need to respond to. So with that, I'll sit down.
Thanks, George. Let's go ahead and open up public comment. We're going to go in order. So who's going to call the names? Are you going to call the names?
Yeah, so I have the initial list of names in front of me. I'll call three names. When I call your name, just please get in line up towards the dice there. And then when we get toward the last speaker, I'll call another three names. Right now, there's sixteen names on the list. And I'll, if you're ready, I can start calling the names. And if I get the pronunciation wrong, my apologies ahead of time. So first, Jay Allen, second, Andrew McCourt, and third, James Parkhurst.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jay Allen, I'm a resident of Granite Bay Tree Lake subdivision, where I'm a frequent user of the unlit bog called Tree Lake Village Park. Unlit bog, for your commission, Commissioner Woodward. As a retired veteran and current federal civil servant with the Department of Veterans Affairs, taking annual leave to meet with you here today, I deeply appreciate the Commission's time in allowing public comment on this project. First, in response to the anticipated comments from nearby residents to Granite Bay, I would submit that no one more understands the culpability and importance of relationships than the leadership of the church. And I am confident that efforts to be a better neighbor will be taken seriously and actively acted upon. When I attended the two-March Granite Bay MAC, like many others here today, focused on the impact of, I focused on the impact of the project for my and my family's personal benefit. My support remains unwavering for myself, my wife, and our eleven-year-old boy-girl twins who play lacrosse to benefit from lighted turf fields with two hundred and sixty-two parking spaces and one less oak tree, a lot less thistles and year-round purpose. What is clearly more the issue here is that of land use and specifically improving in currently undeveloped parcel to one promoting connectedness and legacy. Most leaders never see the impact of their efforts in their lifetime. Your decision today brings a tremendous opportunity to enhance Placer County and specifically Granite Bay's capacity to advance our position to bring residents and guests together in a meaningful, health-focused manner. I urge your support. Thank you, and I'm subject to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Commissioners, my name is Andrew McCourt. I'm actually one of the senior pastors at Bayside Church. But I stand before you as a parent today of seventeen-year-old who came to this country, sorry, seven years ago, when he was ten years old. And we were thoroughly impressed, I have to say, as a European, with the Americans' love of soccer and what you've done for the game globally. And locally, we were embraced by the Granite Bay FC and all that they were doing. And my son has enjoyed seven years of soccer. Our only complication has been playing space, both for practice and actually for match days as well. I'm sure that some people in this room would be able to provide better detail on what those statistics are. But all I know that is, as a parent, many nights, my son has not been able to practice soccer and weekends has not been able to play soccer. Games have been canceled, practices have been canceled due to just an absolute shortage of fields, especially in the winter periods, too. If we experience rain, which is very rare, but on those occasions when we do get rain, it can delay practices and games for up to two or three weeks. So as a parent, I am for this, and I would recommend that we endorse this today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. McCourt.
After James, the next three are Nancy Heath, Gil Steiglitz, and Mike LaFolli.
All right, good afternoon. My name is James Parkhurst. I, first of all, I'm a father of three kids in the community. I'm also a coach with Granite Bay FC and have had the honor since November of last year of being voted in as the president of Granite Bay FC. We're a youth sports nonprofit, youth soccer organization, serving a community. I'm going to give some statistics here. We have roughly a hundred-plus teams in our club that offer recreational and competitive soccer. Within that group, that makes up roughly fifteen hundred players. And that's from a U-six to U-nineteen level. Lots of kids playing soccer, a game that I grew up loving, gave a lot of positive messages and development. And I'm seeing that in the kids that I coach and that I'm around and the families that I'm around. Specifically with the fields, I've been a coach, been involved with the club for about ten years. You know, in the fall, we have roughly ten to twelve fields, which may, or access to, which may seem like a decent amount. I can assure you, every fall, it is a challenge and one of the biggest challenges that we face as a club, trying to fit all those kids on those fields. Going into the spring and winter, or the winter and springtime, we have zero lighted Granite Bay fields, or turf fields, that we have access to as a club. That severely limits what our players can participate in, in that winter time and the springtime. Personally, right now in the spring, my team that I'm coaching throughout the week, we are crammed on one field, we are one of four teams practicing at the same time, which just shows that limitation. And, you know, it's, again, a challenge that's presented year-round for us. Is that my time? Sorry, oh, sorry. And the other thing I just want to mention from our club is that we offer a couple of camps and clinics throughout the year, mainly during the summer. And I've seen, we had almost a hundred kids out at those clinics this past year, or twenty-twenty-one. And what that does also for our community, for our kids, for our players, and the families that can, you know, bring their kids out to participate in. I know that getting, having a field in a complex like this would be able to offer our community and those kids more camps, more clinics, more ways to be outside of the house, being active, participating, meeting new friends, and enjoying the game that I love and I know a lot of the kids in our community love. So thank you for your time, I appreciate your support of this project.
Thanks, James.
Hi there, I'm Nancy Heath, and I've been a resident of Granite Bay for thirty-two years. And I coached everything. I coached basketball, softball. At Grant Bay High School, I coached basketball. I coached my kids' team's soccer, and I was on all these fields. There weren't very many, and every year we've added a little bit more, and this is a great thing. So we need more fields, and Bayside's offering this project, which is a great asset to Granite Bay and to Placer County. Kids need to be active, and I believe team sports are key. I mean, I grew up playing sports, I still do a little bit, but guess what? Now I'm a grandmother. And my children have actually moved back to Granite Bay and Loomis. And now my grandchildren are playing on these fields. So weekends are spent where my husband and I, Brian, go to the games. And we're actually parked, watching the kids every, almost every weekend. So we see the value also of parking, because Feist and Tree Lake, Granite Bay, they don't have enough parking. So what happens is that people park on the streets, which is a hazard. So I think the parking's a key element, we do need it. Also, with all the development that's being done in Granite Bay right now, we need more parks, we need more fields. There's always been a shortage of fields, even back thirty-two years ago when I was coaching. So I think it's a great idea, it's a win, and thank you so much for listening.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Mike LaFolli, and I'm a resident of the homes across the street. I'm also a hundred percent disabled combat veteran who has post-traumatic stress disorder, service-connected. And I picked living in this environment because of the beauty of it, because of the snow caps and the tree line that we see from our homes across the street from Granite Bay Bayside Church. I just think it would be an absolute travesty to put these. I just think it would be an absolute travesty to, to put these lighting poles in and fixtures that would light up. I live, as soon as you turn onto Minor's Ravine, I'm, I'm the third tier of homes up. So my backyard and my living room overlooks the tree line and also the snowcaps, and it's a unique canyon that we have in there. And it's, it acts like an amphitheater because the homes are tiered up. And I would invite any of the, would like to invite any of you to come over to my backyard and see how this would impact our home and, and the other people in this area. I'm really nervous. Sorry. But I just, I, you know, it's not just the lighting, it's having to look at light poles, the back of light poles, you know, where we have a beautiful view of snowcaps and tree lines now. You know, as far as the church is concerned, mid-November through January, it's like living on the Las Vegas Strip. They bring in spotlights now and ice skating rinks, and it's all commercialized. Our windows shake, rattle, and roll. You try and listen to your TV set at night, and all you hear is music blasting and your windows shaking. I have a video of it, if any of you'd like to see that. You know, on Tuesdays and Fridays, we already have loud noise that, that comes from their music that they don't play in their courtyard. It's out in front of the church. You know, and, and we live with, we live with that, but this, this would just be, it would be devastating to the community. This is my forever home. I got to watch it be built. You know, I, I have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in this, and it would just be really sad. And I know that all my neighbors in that area, I've spoken to about 10 of them, can't be here today, but they all feel the same way. And it would just be, it would just be devastating. You know, we could live with some lawn and a little park, but the lighting and the noise till 10 o'clock at night, no thank you. I mean, you might as well. And then what nobody talked about is there's a salmon habitat, right? Minor's Ravine is adjacent property. There's a natural salmon habitat that runs through here. There's the endangered species, the wild elderberry, beetles that are, that are native to this, and it would just be devastating. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. LaFolli.
All right, I believe Gil Steiglitz is not here, if that's true. Otherwise, the next up is Bill Soto, John Oliveri, and Dan Brown.
Distinguished panel, I'm, I'm in the back and listening to you and all your questions regarding this project. I was extremely impressed. My name is William Melendez Soto. Just to give you a little background with me, I was a door gunner in Vietnam. I was there from '68 to '71. I was in numerous missions, almost got shot in the head. One of the bullets that came through our helicopter was about six inches from my head. Numerous mortar attacks, so much so that in one of the mortar attacks, shrapnel was downed our aircraft while we were working on it. Fortunately, we didn't get any. That's just to give you a little insight in my background, I am 100% PTSD. So it's, it's a mental thing, not a, not a physical thing. I was decorated in country. I was decorated also in Washington, DC. So my PTSD is extreme. As it stands now, Bayside Church, once a year, has their ice rink. And when they play their music and they have their loud music on, so much so that I can hear it in my home, I have to turn up my TV almost full blast to drown that out because it sounds to me like mortar attacks. I am triggered a lot of different ways, and that's one of them. So the oncoming of this, this proposal would just trigger me immensely in regards to noise and sound. The traffic would be unbearable for me. I would have to then figure out a way to get through traffic or just stay at home until the traffic was gone. Speaking as a combat vet, this project would be horrendous to me. It would be a nightmare. I just speak for myself. I'm not speaking for combat vets. Thank you for your time. I see my yellow light is on.
A quick question for you, Mr. Soto. Do you live across the street by the gentleman who spoke earlier?
This is correct. Yes, I live off of Stone Ridge, Stone Ridge area is where I live.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez Soto. John Oliveri?
Good afternoon. Bayside's a lousy neighbor. They are so far beyond what was originally approved. It's not funny. One thing of note, I own two homes in the affected area off of Cabot Stallman, neither, side by side. Neither one of those homes received notification of this meeting, and neither did a few of my neighbors around me. As I understand it, the last time there was a formal traffic study in the Granite Bay area was 2015. So if they're basing their calculations, we know it's a lot different there now. And it's not taken into consideration the 900 daily trips projected out of Rio del Oro. Right now, when the Carnival of Activities gets out or church, it appears the light changes timing coming out onto Sierra College because you can wait to turn north from Cabot Stallman on to Sierra College and have to wait three light changes to get that distance. And I can guarantee you, if they add a light there, it'll be backed up all the way to Douglas and across during peak traffic times. There's been complaints from the activities on public media as far away as Alexandria, which if you know where that is, that's a mile and a half away. In my home, which has sheet rock on the outside, 58 siding, lap siding, and dual pane windows, I have a decibel reading of 65 in my house. We have to play white noise fans and so forth to just try to drown it out. There's no more enjoying the backyard patio, dinner guests while any of the events are going on. It's just not happening. Sorry, I can't see.
Could I have you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. John Oliveri. I'm not anti-soccer. I'm anti-league play. I'm anti-light. I'm, he made a little different thing here than what I heard at the GMAC meeting. But originally, it's projected 8:00 AM, 10:00 PM, seven days a week. And they're tailing that, and one of his points was, well, you know, Sunday night or this, the kids gotta go to school and get ready for bed. Parents go to work. Well, if it's not going to be an intrusion, why is that something that's necessary? I guess that's it. I just, once again, I want to emphasize how poor of a neighbor they are. And, you know, I've lived there 37 years. I feel like this has been shoved down my throat. And it's pretty annoying. And they say no sound system. Well, it was going to be no lights, no this, no that. So that'll be the next thing. Another thing at the GMAC meeting.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Mr. Oliveri, if I could, you had mentioned that you didn't get, you had two addresses at Cabot Stallman?
No.
That didn't get noticed. Could you provide me the addresses of those?
4580 Lawrence Drive, 4560 Lawrence Drive.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Dan Brown. After Dan, Andy Sheehy, Jane Negri, Sandy Harris.
My name is Dan Brown, and I want to thank the Commission for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Bayside and our local soccer community. And I've had a little time today to read some of the comments. And there's, I, as I read through the comments, there is a good amount of opposition. And two of the common themes I see are activity and noise. And Bayside definitely creates some activity and noise. What I fear more than that, though, I fear when the noise goes away. I fear when the activity stops. Because I've been a math teacher for 28 years, and every Monday for 28 years, I've asked my students, what was your favorite thing you did this weekend? In the old days, it was full of activity and sports and engagement with other people. And now most Mondays, most students where I teach, they say, oh, Mr. Brown, I spent my weekend just kind of sitting around on my phone. I went on TikTok, played some video games. That's what I'm scared about. It's when the relationships stop, and that's what Bayside is creating with these soccer fields. I also understand the whole environmental piece. I'm an active outdoorsman. I fly fish, I mountain bike, I hike. And for the last 20 years, every time I train on my bike and I ride up Sierra College, I have actually pictured a soccer field being placed there, which is crazy that now it's a, it's a possibility. And maybe I've been picturing that because I've been coaching soccer for 15 years in Granite Bay. Maybe it's because I have three daughters who've grown up playing soccer in Granite Bay and lacrosse. My youngest daughter is even playing tackle football right now, which is a riot. But we, we're on those fields a ton. But what I want to talk to you about is another group entirely. It's a group called Top Soccer. And Top Soccer, it's soccer for kids with special needs. Before COVID hit, we had up to 70 kids participating in all types of special needs. Some kids on the autism spectrum, some kids with Down syndrome, kids with cerebral palsy. And Granite Bay Soccer has partnered with that group to provide, we basically pair up able-bodied teens with the kids with special needs, and we play soccer, and we teach soccer skills, and we engage in soccer games. We've been doing that now for several years. It's an incredible program. I've had the privilege of working with kids with special needs, not just through Top Soccer, but with different programs for the last 30 years. And, you know, during that time, I, I've pushed a lot of wheelchairs. I've pushed wheelchairs up, you know, in rocks and sand, even up in the snow. And, you know, one thing I've found, and we've, you know, a couple of people had asked about the grass versus synthetic fields. Synthetic turf is the easiest turf on which to push a wheelchair. When I heard these fields were potentially going in, my first, one of my first phone calls was to one of the Top Soccer players. Her name is Brooke, a beautiful girl, and she has a hard time moving. She's in a wheelchair. And when I, when I push her in a wheelchair and soccer, she'll grab my head in her hands, and she'll pull me close, so our heads are like touching. And one of her first calls was to her mom saying, hey, we're looking at putting in synthetic turf at Granite Bay so that your daughter can play soccer year-round, not just when it's warm out, not just when the grass is, you know, healthy, but throughout the entire year. And along with that, that's why lights are so important. So kids like Brooke and other kids like that can play soccer year-round here in Granite Bay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. EJ, before you call the next list, I think we're going to need to take a break. So before you.
All right, we can do that. Next up will be Andy. I believe that's who's coming up now, and so.
We can, we can, yeah.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Andy Sheehy. I'm a resident in Granite Bay. Also, serving my 12th year as an elected member of the Eureka Union School District, which encompasses the unincorporated parts of Placer County and Granite Bay, as well as some of the incorporated parts of Roseville, certainly where Bayside Church is located on. And I'm here today not to negate some of the concerns that some of the residents around Bayside Church has expressed, not the least of which the, the gentleman that spoke before that suffers from PTSD. But rather, I'm here to express a point of view that may be a little bit different to some of the other objectives, which is the notion that there's enough community fields and community space that's available to our community. Working with the Placer County Parks and Recreation Division about four years ago, our district, and I, I must note that I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not on behalf of our, our districts or our colleagues. But, but we know for a fact, and it was alluded to earlier, that, that the South Placer area is under-indexed as it relates to recreational space per, per resident. And so we, we sought to partner with Placer County in order to help, you know, close the gap in that regard. And we offered up some of our own land in order to do that. But the Placer County could not come up with the, the funding sources to, to do it. So then on our own, we floated a, a school bond about a year after that, where in addition to trying to modernize some of our schools, we were going to invest in the same exact facilities that we're talking about today, but just on, on our school campuses. And unfortunately, that did not pass, and it failed. So because of that, the fact that there is this need, there's a delta between what the county expresses as what our rights are in terms of the recreational space as it relates to the, the citizens that we have. I strongly support this project by Bayside Church. I think it'd be a great add, not just for the community at large, but specifically the children that will be utilizing these fields. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehy. We're going to take a five minutes, take a five-minute break. We'll come back. Continue public comment. Okay, we're going to get started again. Please take your seat. We're going to get started again here. Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order again. Thanks for letting us get revived so we can do our best up here. It's really important to us that we get all the public comment and we hear from you, and that's important to us. So we're going to continue. EJ, do you need to read the list again, or are we queued up here with enough?
I think so. Jane is, Jane Negri is ready to go, and Sandy Harris is after Jane.
At 4502 Olive Ranch Road, 10 houses down from this project. During the planning period, Bayside agreed to keep all the heritage oaks and protect them. There is one in an unprotected site. It is down in a swale at the end of the parking lot, very close to Cabot Stallman. It is a grand old blue oak and may be well over 200 to 300 years old. I'm quoting a UC study. It showed that blue oaks grow very slowly. Trees that are seven inches in diameter may very well be 100 years old. These findings suggest that we should be cautious when making decisions about harvesting blue oak trees. The USDA Forest Service stated, "Blue oak roots are extensive, growing through fractured and jointed rock to a depth of 80 feet or more to tap groundwater reserves." "This oak has survived in stressed growing conditions." "Granite Bay has suffered enough of a tree loss. I would ask that you save this oak tree. Do not destroy it for part of a parking lot. Redraw the plan." "We are not opposed to soccer fields. We are opposed to cramming them into an existing older rural neighborhood." "Noise and traffic will be overwhelming issues to deal with. I don't have time for that discussion." "I'd like to focus on the lighting, which will change our lives forever." "Granite Bay has very few streetlights. It has no right lighting in our parks on purpose because we are a rural community." "And I'm, I was hoping I would see a compromise on the lighting schedule." "The lights say they're going to be turned off at 10, but in the addendum, it says they are going to be turned down 50% at 11:00 PM. They are absolutely going to be on all the time." "There should be complete darkness and no field lights and no parking lights on at all. There should be no lights on during the day. When we have a gloomy rainy day and I look down the street, I don't want to see lights shining." "And I also think that if the committee had thought about it, they would have realized that continual artificial lighting would affect a person's psyche. Think about how many of us complain about daylight savings time. Any lights on during the day fall under the category of light pollution and should be eliminated. Many people speaking today do not live in Granite Bay. They will enjoy these fields." Well, I'm going to say this real fast. Then they'll go home. "And while the teams arrive with ongoing noise and more traffic and compromise our community, please tell the developers that we..." please tell the developers that we don't need these lights to play soccer. There are lighted fields. Schedule fewer nighttime games. Give something up, too. It's more than all about soccer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negri.
Sandy Harris is up next. Afterwards, Danielle Canlis, Sean Copeland, and Paul Walsh.
Good afternoon, Sandy Harris. I am here speaking on behalf of the Granite Bay Community Association. We can all agree that this project would be a welcome addition. However, in the zeal to provide fields for special interest groups, there are some concerns. Based on feedback we have received, the fields are supported, but not the lights. The primary concern is the inclusion of precedent-setting lights, which would allow the use of the fields 14 hours per day, year-round, and the public notice didn't mention the operating hours until 10 o'clock nightly. So I suspect that some of the people who say they support this project don't realize what the possibility of the operation time is. It's a very long day for established low-density neighborhoods in this rural area of Granite Bay. Actually, Cabot Stallman is a rural road that, you know, kind of parallels this. The Granite Bay Community Plan notes that new recreational development be consistent or compatible with the adjacent land use. This project is in an established low-density neighborhood. We do not agree that it does not disrupt the overall character of the area. Lights in the area are primarily on the Roseville side of Sierra College Boulevard. By design, Granite Bay has very little street lighting in order to enhance the rural nature of the community. When crossing Sierra College going east from Roseville on Douglas, there is a stark difference with the lighting in Granite Bay. Just because this project doesn't generate extensive traffic, when three teams could play at a time over the course of 14 hours daily, the amount of traffic and noise generated would be an ongoing nuisance, even if it is not impacting certain roads or intersections. No relief or tranquility for the residents. The 2,000 conditions of approval limited occasional outdoor events to courtyard within the building complex. No events, outdoor musical bands, or amplified sound were prohibited in the parking areas. Despite this condition, events are often held in the outdoor areas. And over the past many years, events have taken place with lighting and amplification outside the courtyard area. Apparently, CUPs and TOE permits are easily obtained for events, and we don't know how much public input is sought or who oversees compliance. Based on this past history, there is little confidence that a condition limiting the daylights can be on until 10 o'clock would be adhered to. The project is a huge change from the original concept. It proposes two or three fields, field lighting, organized tournaments, sports events, and regular league use. Providing the fields is an asset for some of the community, but the community as a whole needs to be considered. Please consider eliminating the lights to make it compatible with the rural area of Granite Bay. The Granite Bay Community Association supports the project without lights. But if the lights are approved, then the hours of use should be restricted, Sunday through Thursday, and the condition must be strictly enforced, not like in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Good afternoon. My name is Danielle Canlis. I'm actually one of the neighbors across this field. I live just off of Miners Ravine. My husband and I moved here about three years ago. And we absolutely love what Bayside has done for our community. I grew up in Holland, which is a huge soccer country. My brother, my friends, my dad, we all played soccer. We went out to soccer games. We had lots of fields around us with lights that probably are 200% brighter than these beautiful ones that we were talking about. It created community. It kept us all outside. It gave us, yeah, great times to be together. And honestly, when my husband and I drive home, we get excited when there's things going on at Bayside. When there is noise, when there's lights, it just means that kids are finding community. They're not on the street. They're together. They're having fun. They're creating memories. I can't stretch enough how important these soccer fields would be for our community. We were so excited when we heard about the soccer fields coming there because we think it's going to be a change in our community where kids just are going to have a lot of fun. And the gentleman before me just said it beautifully. I'm more afraid that noise will stop, then noise will come. And, yeah, I gladly welcome these soccer fields. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Not good. 55, and the memory's already gone. My name's Sean Copeland. I'm a 24-year resident of Granite Bay. I'm also a former soccer coach in Granite Bay. Before it was Granite Bay FC, it was Eureka Youth Soccer Club. I also served on Eureka's board. And not to beat a dead horse, we've all heard about the need for soccer fields, but I just wanted to give a little more color to that and history behind that. Going back to about 10 or 12 years ago, soccer fields were still an issue or lack of. At that time, ironically, we hired Dave Cook, who I saw was on a call earlier, to do an evaluation of 20 acres on Rockland Road and Barton Road, if you know where the Catholic Church used to own that 20 acres or so. It was cost prohibitive at the time. So one of the things, you know, as a former coach, former board member of Eureka Youth Soccer, that I really appreciate about, appreciate about this project is there are no public funds being used. This is essentially all Bayside-funded. And I, you know, any, knowing the challenges we faced in the soccer club back when I was, you know, involved, I think it's a tremendous gift and a tremendous asset to the community. And, you know, taking nothing away from the opposition, I totally get it. But I also know that we're in a very, you know, booming area of California, and we've got new residents that have that need and new families that need the need, that have the need for soccer fields. So really, all I just wanted to do is voice my support for the project, and that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Copeland.
All right, next up was Paul Walsh. I believe he indicated he had to leave. So next is Jim Luke, Virge Anderson, and then Marty Januso. Those are all that I have on the list, Chair.
Hi, I'm Jim Luke. I live at 4276 Cabot Stallman Road. And we built there in 1983, so we've been there 39 years. Bayside is just across the street. In fact, my house is just across from the fields, the proposed fields. So I'm right across the street across from them. And Bayside has been wonderful tenants ever since they've been there. And we was proud to have them as good neighbors, and they've been good to us. And they've, I'll buy them once in a while to see if everything's all right. And we don't have any complaints. So I'm just glad to be a neighbor of them. And so, with my, we've just watched all the kids play across the street from us, and the lighting don't bother us, and I'm sure this will be a good project. I'm fond of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luke.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to speak here today. I, I'm a park planner by trade. Retired, worked for a different county. But I am on the Park Commission up here and the Granite Bay MAC. I don't speak for either one of those, but I use that to let you know that that's how I'm thinking here as a park planner. I am a resident of Granite Bay. Before you, I gave you a sheet that it has, the top portion is an excerpt out of the community plan from 2012. And it has the parks that are in the Granite Bay area.
Real quick, what's your name, sir?
Virgil Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Essentially, what we have had in the Granite Bay area is 100 acres of parks. When Granite Bay gets built out, we should be in the neighborhood of, we're thinking, 26,000 people. For 26,000 people, we should have five acres of parks per thousand, or 130 acres. Currently, right now, we're lacking some acreage. In the count, there's a couple of things that are not counted. One is the surplus land, if I can call it that, or the open space plan that Eureka Elementary School has, or the Eureka District has, just north of the elementary school. That is approximately 4.3 acres, 4.8 acres. And then, the Lutheran Church has got almost five acres that they have allowed the community to use for the last 40-plus years as a soccer field. We don't count that. Bayside has 17-plus acres there that they want to turn into essentially a park for the community. Right now, I don't not see any flat areas in the Granite Bay area that can be set aside and purchased by the county for parks. And if we were to include that acreage in our park count, which Andy's not here, I'm not sure we can even really do that, but at least it would serve the needs of the community. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Virgil.
Last one, Marty Januso.
Good afternoon. My name is Marty Januso. I am a resident of Granite Bay. In fact, I'm on the east side of the Cabot Stallman element. I am here to just represent, or just state that my approval of the project that Bayside is proposing. And lighting is not a concern for me. My backyard is directly visible for them, and I'm one of the residents that are indicated on the proposal as well. Initially, my concern was traffic and the congestion and the way things were going to flow. After talking with one of the, Mr. Stewart, he helped me understand a lot more of the proposal and put me at ease with my concerns. And overall, I'm just a very good supporter of this project, and I'd be happy to see the kids out there and more activities going on. Just being a parent of two kids that are recently out of the house, it kind of reminds me of when I was with my kids, taking them to the soccer game. So it gives me some good memories to see. And I just wanted to be here to show my approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Januso.
Januso.
Januso. Anyone else here in person like to speak? I believe we have quite a few, five or so online?
Yes, sir.
Seven, okay, we've got seven. So let's work through those.
Ms. Burns, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Tasha Burns. I am a resident here in the Stone Ridge community, directly across the street from the proposed project. And I do object to this project. I am a nurse, so I do work various hours, which having all of the light and the noise will directly affect my quality of life, as well as my neighbors. There's been multiple concerns. Multiple of my neighbors are healthcare workers. The noise that currently comes from the summer camps, as well as the winter events and other various events, already are an issue for us. I know originally, there was a proposal for just one field that was on the farther end of this field. My house is directly in front. So on Ferdinand, which the map incorrectly has it labeled as Olympus, that's actually Ferdinand, and my house is the two-story right there. So I will be affected by the light pollution, as well as the noise and the traffic. So I strongly object to this project. And I hope you guys take that, the residents, into consideration that do oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Mr. Bennett, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Gary Bennett. I've been a resident of Granite Bay for 32 years, and I support this project. And I do want to put one comment for the parking. Bayside is overflow parking for the Miners Ravine parking lot, which is, you know, a small parking lot. So there would be a benefit to everyone using the Miners Ravine Parkway of the extra parking available for that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Cheryl, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners. Could I please have Bennett queue the second VMT slide, please? I wanted to point out something on that slide for VMT. And while he's doing that, an addendum to a previously certified EIR is not only not sufficient, because the conditions have significantly changed since the original EIR, but the project description for the Bayside Fields Addendum is substantially different. Logic would dictate that when all of the conditions specifically not allowed in the original EIR are now being included in the addendum, that the definition is for a completely different project. A new environmental impact report is required. I'd like to point you to the VMT description because it was not done. And we're talking about houses of worship and fitness facilities. So I would challenge that using team sports is completely different. You have people traveling from outside of the area, and that VMT should be included because it's not from the house of worship solely. It is also, when you state that it's primarily, primarily is not an objective measure. It can't be measured, and it can't be enforced. So how many of these, and who is going to be, as Sandy Harris said, who's doing any of the enforcement? Currently, law enforcement is not managing. Neither is code enforcement, because it's getting worse and worse, as evidenced by all the letters that were submitted. So I would say that the VMT not being included is completely inadequate as far as traffic is concerned. And also, there is a measure of, it's .1 in LOS. People from outside of the area that are heading here are going to be walking like cattle across the street. That's not .1 second. I don't believe that there's any measure of all the people that are not familiar with the area crossing the street, going to potentially Miners Ravine to have a picnic lunch. So I think that that's a severe miss. I'm also very concerned that the MAC feedback, none of it was taken into account. And General Woodward's question was never answered. There's 800 and something parking. If it's a self-managed activity where the fields are not happening at the same time, then why doesn't 883 parking spaces suffice? I think that the, that the transportation folks owe a response on that. Also, the, I believe that Roseville Engineering has already complained multiple times about the traffic in the area. They said the next project was going to have to take on the six-lane increase at the intersection of Sierra College and Douglas. Is Bayside going to put forth that money to make that enhancement? Because we all know that that intersection is going to be impacted. I think that the capital improvements being put off, Placer County is already $3 billion short in improvements. So to say that just add another can to the road that you're going to kick down the road, it shouldn't be happening if we can't fund it.
Thank you, Ms. Burkmann. Your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. I hope you will seriously consider the omission of the VMT. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah, it says connecting to audio.
Yeah.
I'm going to go to the next person, and then maybe we can, Ms. Williams, if you can hear us, if you want to phone in, we can, we can get your voice on the phone, if that's better.
Ms. Jasper, do you want to unmute your mic? You'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning. Marilyn Jasper, Public Interest Coalition. First, Public- First, public use of fields seems to be energetically supported by potential public users. I would like to put another perspective on that public use assumption. When this project was first submitted, it was specifically stated to not, quote, "not allow for public league play," unquote. Now, with the changes, it will be available for public use with stipulations. Attachment, C reeds, reservations will be required for public use via prior arrangement with Bayside Church, which, on the surface, seems reasonable. Obviously, having fields for public use seems to be a primary reason for support of the proposal. However, there are no guarantees of any public use. With privately owned fields, which this is, public applicants have no recourse if, when preferences are given to certain leagues or groups and not to others. Also, there may be some, such as church members, who may use the fields for free or for a minimum fee, but for others, such as public or non-church members, fees may range to restrictively high to reserve or use a field, which is the right of a private landowner and perfectly legal to impose. This perspective should be keep in mind if some kind of public asset benefit or right is incorrectly being assumed with this project, with this proposal as a positive, which it may not be. And second, to stop activities at 10:00 PM is too late, especially on Sundays or work nights, with unacceptable, significant negative impacts. After activities are stopped with possibly six teams, there is usually socialization, celebrity noises, horn honking, shouting, vehicles, engines, and other disturbances. All activities should have to stop by at least 7:00 or 8:00 PM, especially on Sunday nights and weeknights, for all the cleanup and the after-event disturbances, to make certain that neither neighbors nor the community, especially those who work, are disturbed that late, and that minors are not out so late on school nights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jasper.
Ms. Williams, let's try it again. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. I apologize for that. Good afternoon, my name is Laura Williams. I am the mother of a daughter who plays team sports. And I took the time today away from my job while others were not able to, to oppose the approval of this conditional use permit. I fail to see the rationale of putting this here. Residents bought their homes when there was an approval of one combined field with no lights and just for the use of Bayside Church members. Now, this use has all changed, and there will be an increase in the noise, not only from the crowds, but from the whistleblowing that happens with these types of events. There will be traffic, parking issues, the lighting is also a concern. Bayside has other properties that would be better suited for fields like this. For example, their very large adventure campus, that has also their school, that could also utilize a field like this. And while I understand the modeling and performance and running the numbers and things for the lighting, they sound great on paper, but you have to think about the people who live nearby. I mean, what if you lived there? Would you be in support of increased traffic noise and parking? So I do appreciate that all the Commissioners asking thoughtful questions and for listening to the nearby residents, as they're concerned always. Again, I do oppose this project, so thank you.
Are you still speaking? Or she turned off her mic, okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Ms. Beckler, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Amber Beckler, a resident in Granite Bay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'm not here to provide support or opposition for the project. I just wanted to provide a few additional comments and questions, speaking as a resident from Granite Bay. The discussion about lighting at the MAC in early March was that, at minimum, the lights be reduced during the week to 8:30, Monday through Thursday, and that was based on feedback of soccer league playtime. Others were supportive of the project if lights weren't there at all. And so I'm not sure what's actually in the proposal ahead of you, but I just wanted to share that. I know that some think about this one blue oak, like it's not that significant, but I would like to share that we spent three hours in a board hearing on Tuesday discussing the value of oak trees in the Granite Bay community for the developer that cut them down unauthorized. So they do provide value, and they provide aesthetic value to the folks in the community. And so by eliminating parking spaces, you could actually save that tree. I also wanted to just share that it had been identified, that the Parks and Open Space Department, that the Granite Bay fields actually have lower rental rates than any surrounding regional fields. And I've also heard that other soccer coaches in the community actually said that they can't get access to Granite Bay fields, probably because of the lower rental rates, and other teams outside of Granite Bay were actually renting them out back-to-back. I think it's important to understand this, because the whole concept of scarcity and availability, I don't think it's fully flushed out yet, and the data isn't available. One other point I wanted to bring up, and I'm not opposed to soccer, I actually love team sports, I think it's great. It was brought up about the fact that if Granite Bay is to benefit by this, they are given in the CUP's second priority, which is a concern. And so is there a way to make sure teams in Granite Bay would get access? Further final points, and I think I'm out of time. For the wetland mitigation, can it just be clarified that the proper permitting is being pursued? Because my understanding is that, at the original time of the EIR, even if it was mitigated, if new wetlands formed, man-made or not, that has to be permitted? And for the drainage issue, is there additional pollutants coming from astroturf that would run off into Miners Ravine, which is a salmon habitat and an important corridor in our dry creek water shed? Thank you so much.
I think it's Mr. Chikaki. Please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Ken Chahaski, and I live a block from Olive Ranch School, just off Olive Ranch Road in Granite Bay. And I've lived here for over 16 years. We actually moved to Granite Bay from Roseville to enjoy the many features, both rural and suburban. As you know, you drive down Olive Ranch Road, it has a very, what I'll call, rural feel to it. And we've lived near there, and I take walks along there and walk all the way, actually, to the church and back, which is about a mile from my house. We've always lived near a school and parks. There's no sweeter sound than kids playing, laughing, enjoying the outdoors. You know, during the fall, I can hear Granite Bay High School's band playing from my house, which is more than a mile away, but it's a wonderful sound. And in the fall, I've seen lots of little kids and families, large and small, enjoying soccer at Placer County Park called Granite Bay, excuse me, Olive Ranch Park, Douglas Ranch Park. Personally, I'm in favor of more recreation and family activities. My kids are grown, but I still serve on the Granite Bay Soccer Board of Directors as a volunteer. You know, and why do I do that? It's for kids in the community. I'd really remind you of a couple of things here that I've heard people comment about that I think are a little bit misplaced. I live near the Douglas Ranch Park, and those games there on Saturdays in the fall, and practically no one walks to the park. They drive their car, park in my neighborhood, and walk there. There are no horns honking. There is no trash in the neighborhood. It's all picked up. I'd also remind you that kids go to school, and the league doesn't really promote practices late into the evenings, because kids have homework and things to do. Okay? Almost all practices end by 8:30 due to school during the year. So really, what I'm really trying to represent to you is many of the things I've heard, you know, of potential issues. I live near a park. I don't see them in my park. I haven't experienced them near my park. And I'm proud to live near the park and live near a school. You know, I hope you'll consider this proposal, which provides more recreation and no additional fiscal cost for the county. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chahaski.
I'm not sure who this is. I just have a phone number. Could you please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak? Looks like 916, I hate to say it out loud.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Bak, is it Bakar, Basarich? Please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Rhonda Basarich. I live across the street from Bayside Granite Bay Church, at the cross streets of Miners Ravine Drive and Sierra College Boulevard. I fully support this Bayside Church project, as this will provide a physical outlet for all residents in the Granite Bay/Roseville/Rockland community. Most important, this project will contribute to the improvement of the mental and physical health and wellness of the youth and young adults, who were the largest population negatively affected by the COVID shutdown. The youth and young adults are the future of our community, and we should invest in their health and wellness, as well as the families of the rest of the communities. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you support this project from Bayside Church.
Thank you, Ms. Basarich.
David, please unmute your mic. State your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple of points. I know we've kind of been doing this a while. I live across the street, directly across the fields, and almost directly across from Golden One Center, I mean, Bayside Church. The only real problem I have besides, I mean, the worry about the lights, is the 24/7 use. It's not soccer, it's rugby. If it's not rugby, it's lacrosse. I hate to be the villain and say, I don't want this across the street from my house because of the noise and everything that's going to happen, that comes with all that, because, you know, it's a great thing. I live in Roseville, and I think we have like 80-plus parks. There's so much outside availability, which was never, when the COVID was happening, going outside was the number-one thing to do, like go and play like outside, outdoors. So I think that opportunity was never lost during the pandemic. I think people had opportunity to maybe not play on the park equipment, but going outside and throwing a ball or kicking a ball was never against the rules. So I don't think that we lost much of that. The team sports thing, we did, because my daughter didn't get to play softball. It all sounds nice and accommodating for Bayside, and I think Bayside is pretty cool for, like, how cool they run things, and even though my windows shake when they play their concerts, and the lights light up the sky at night, like, you know, like a concert. It's cool if it wasn't so close, you know? If it was on the edge of town, I don't know. I don't want to tell them what to do with the property, but I do not want this in front of my property. So that's all I can say, just to oppose it. I'd love them to make it just a little away from everybody, so people can get to it, but not have to live in it. Because whoever is going to play at these tournaments and run this, they're going to go home at night, or they're going to go home on their day off. I'm a stay-at-home dad. I'm never going to escape this, unless I get a job, I guess. But I appreciate your time, to listen in to everybody. So thank you very much.
Right.
I have the phone call from 916, 899-4806. We'll try it again, if you unmute your mic.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Victoria Thorstad, and I've been a resident of Granite Bay since 1976. My main concern, other than the noise, the lighting, the windows shaking, and the traffic that's already a problem, is the homeless people coming, which they do often in parks, they reside in parks, round parks, and the violence that comes with that, as well as the trap, sorry, as well as the trash. And this is a quiet community, or it was before Bayside. And I'm not opposed to the church, and I'm not opposed to having a recreational center for kids and the whole community effort. But with the noise and the lighting and the sound already, that's just incredible at night. I'm definitely opposed to all of the field activities that they want to create, as well as the lighting and the noise that comes along with that. I live over on Lawrence Drive, and it's, you know, it's a distance from the church itself, and there is a lot of noise that we hear, especially at night, and, I mean, into the late, late hours at night. So the homelessness is a big issue for me. I feel that that's going to draw a lot of unwanted people into the area, and I don't want to see this part of the community going downhill, and I don't want to have to deal with the side effect of that homelessness happening as well. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Victoria.
Yes.
I just said thank you. Yeah, thank you. That's it. Okay. I just want to give another opportunity for anyone here that wants to speak in person. Okay, we're going to close public comment. I'd like to bring back, yeah, we can have the applicant come back.
Thank you, Chairman Herzog. If I could try to walk through some of the comments that have come up and respond to those, hopefully I can do that quickly. And then I will be asking Scott Connor, who's also a senior pastor at Bayside, to come up and address some of the neighbor issues that have come up. First, just for clarification of some of the commenters, the one, Ms. Nagri, I believe, who talked about the lights being on 24/7, there's a, not to be mistaken, there are two different types of lights we're talking about, those that deal with the field and then parking. The lighting hours that she was talking about are the parking lot lights, not the field lights. So I just wanted to make that clarification. The other issue that Ms. Burkema brought up relative to the environmental document, also to clarify, that the EIR that was done for the project, the original Bayside project, and went before the board in the year 2000, the footprint of that project and the square footage was larger than what exists on the site today. That environmental document looked at that entire original project, which was the 174,000 square feet versus the 94,000 square feet, looked at the recreational fields, which is why that document is still relevant, and why staff used the addendum as the approach to the environmental document here. Because it was looking at, the addendum looked at whether or not the impacts proposed by this project, this use permit, were addressed in the original environmental document in terms of area disturbance, traffic, biological impacts, et cetera, and whether there are any new impacts presented by this project that are, without mitigation, would be significant. And so I just, it's important to clarify for the public, I realize the Commission understands this, that the original document looked at this entire area, this entire footprint, this entire, the biological impacts resulting from that larger project, different, separate apart from what was approved back in 2000. So I wanted to make that clarification. Ms. Burkema also brought up the issue of VMT. VMT Ms. Burkema also brought up the issue of VMT. VMT is analyzed in the addendum, so I'm not quite sure her point there. And also, VMT looks at both cars that are coming and going from that location. It made it sound like she felt it was restricted only to cars leaving the project, which is not the case. So I wanted to make that clarification. There was also, Ms. Jasper brought up a very good issue, and it was echoed by at least one other commenter online about what are the assurances of public use at these fields? And Bayside is committing that there will be public use at this facility, for the life of this facility. That public use will be coordinated with Bayside-type uses, and it'll be like, it'll be maintained similar to any other park facility in the county where teams that want to practice or teams that want to utilize it will schedule that, and there will be a fee for that. And I assume that we would always be competitive with whatever the park district is imposing for those costs, so that is a commitment that Bayside is ready to make. The other issue I wanted to mention is that some comments today, but also at the MAC, a commenter said, "This isn't about soccer. This is a land use decision." And that's true. This is a land use decision. This request of a conditional use permit is a land use decision. There has been plenty of testimony today, I think, which the Planning Commission could interpret as meaning that there is a need, a current need in the Granite Bay community for this facility, and I really think that's undeniable. We actually have cards signed by seventeen hundred Placer County residents that are in support of this facility, so I think we can demonstrate the need, and we have demonstrated the need. The issue then becomes, can it be done in a compatible fashion? And from a land use perspective, if you go up to thirty thousand square, thirty thousand feet and you look at this site, it is a transition. It's the very edge, western edge of Granite Bay. It's adjacent to Sierra College Boulevard, which is planned to be a six-lane arterial. I think the section here is at least six or five, five or six lanes. It is a major transportation corridor that goes from Highway one ninety-three up in rural Placer County down to Hazel Avenue and all the way into South Sacramento County. So this is a major location. Is it appropriate to have an activity center at a site like this? From a land use perspective, I would suggest to the commission that yes, it is an appropriate site, not only for this church, but also for this type of facility, this recreation facility. So then the issue becomes one of can the impacts presented by this project be mitigated to less than significant level? You have an analysis in your environmental document that looks at lighting, photometric analysis, the discussions that was presented by staff and then also by our lighting expert as to how that lighting can be controlled, the footprint of that lighting, the visibility of that lighting, the spillover of that lighting, and the conclusion in that environmental document before you is that that is a less than significant impact and can be managed appropriately. The issue then comes to hours of that lighting. There, I think Bayside understands the ten PM and is open to a more restrictive time of nine PM would be the preference over eight thirty, but nine PM to reduce that time, to make it again compatible, more compatible with the neighborhood. The other issue that's been brought up is noise. Noise is a legitimate issue, absolutely. Again, you have a noise analysis in your environmental document that says both exterior and interior noise levels will not be will not be a significant impact to interior or exterior noise levels at any of the adjoining properties. So you have a document that says it meets all county standards. You have obviously anecdotal information, and I think I'm gonna call Scott up at this point to address that, the neighbor issue, because I think this process has allowed one huge opportunity, and that is for Bayside to hear from its neighbors, and I think we'd like to address that right now if we could.
Hello, my name's Scott Connor. I'm the executive pastor of Bayside Granite Bay. I oversee the operations of everything that we do, and sitting here to those of you on Zoom, to those of you in the room and hearing some of the noise complaint, on behalf of our entire team, we are so sorry, because our heart is to be the best neighbor possible. The whole reason we're even here today before all of you is because we want to be a great neighbor to our community. Why we want to invest in fields, to make our community a better place. So as we're hearing today and some of the noise problems, man, I am so sorry. I live in the community. I talk to our staff, often think about what it's like to live, as some people have said, across the street. So we certainly are gonna do our very best to mitigate any of the disruptions that it represent to those that live right next door to us, to those that are far away. Let me speak very specifically to one item that was brought up by a few of our people that commented. It was the light show. During COVID, we all remember the last two years and how fun they have been. Locked down, sitting here and remembering to unmute brings back bad memories for me. But as we were going through that time, we also were dealing with how do we address the needs of our community to get out of their homes, for families to gather, to be able to spend time together, and in that period of time in a safe manner? Not talking about soccer fields, just something in that season of Christmas. And so we made the decision to put on a light show, which was hitting a felt need at that time. It was fantastic. People in the community really appreciated it. However, there were some instances of which we own that the volume or the system went off on times that we were not expecting. Man, I reached out to any person that called us. I personally didn't spin it off on anyone else. I personally would take the time to call them. I'm so sorry that happened. That is our heart. So during COVID, we were working through that. As we now are getting through the better side of COVID, we aren't wearing masks, everybody. It's great. We also had acknowledged that we probably don't need to do the light show anymore, and even hearing from, I forgot the gentleman in the back. Thank you for your service, by the way, sir. We look at the fact that that's probably not something we need to do again. So as we look at the soccer fields, of course, we would love to be able to have those soccer fields as a service to our community. We also know that there's neighbors who have brought up some things today that we want to make sure to be the best neighbor possible. So what our proposal would be to those of you in the room, to those of you on Zoom, is to host. We have gathering space to host a public meeting every single year. We can figure out the best time to be able to bring all the stakeholders, whether they live on Cabot Stallman, they live on Lawrence Drive, if they live in Rockland, if they live wherever, anybody that could be, to get the word out, to be able to host, to talk about how has the last few months, how has the last year been? Is this what is, are we meeting the needs of the community? Is there something that we're missing that we haven't heard? Of course, do we look on Nextdoor app? Do we look on Facebook? Do we, yeah, of course. We try on any of those. We want to know what's going on in the community, one to fill needs, two, to make sure that we are the best neighbor possible. So what our proposal would be is to be able to host a public gathering with our neighbors. We would love anybody from the county or any of the other stakeholders in the area to come together, talk about how the last year has been, and then obviously to share, here's some things we're looking at as a church. How will this affect your lifestyle? We live in the community. Some of our staff live in the backyard of Bayside. We want to be the best neighbor possible.
Yeah, is that Scott? Is that right? Can you come back for a second? Maybe we have a couple of questions for you. That's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just a little bit puzzling here, but at any rate, when when the commenter was talking about VMT, she was mentioning people coming from outside the area, and I don't know how you really calculate that, but at any rate...
I could address that very quickly if you'd like. In our database of who comes to our church, our number one constituency lives in the Granite Bay zip code. Our number two constituency lives in six six one, which is, I guess it's right on the other side of Sierra College. Our third is the six seven seven. So if you look at a three-mile radius, a vast majority of people that come to our church are in that area. Of course, there are people that are further out. There are. But the vast majority of people in our database that engage with us on a regular basis are people right in our backyard of Granite Bay.
Okay, so that partially answers it, but at any rate, the other thing I can think about is, you know, soccer tournaments. And oftentimes, you may have people coming from great distances to participate. Do you anticipate most the action on this being local people, or are you gonna visualize soccer tournaments that bring people in from long distance?
I wouldn't visualize it being more local. I wouldn't use the phrase of tournaments. I would use the phrase of league. So we had some people from Granite Bay FC. We've had some conversations, very preliminary with them. Could we host something like Granite Bay FC or just the local soccer clubs? I think the idea would be local people using our soccer fields there. The idea of a regional tournament, absolutely not. That's not on the table. Add to the fact that we still are a church. So a regional tournament, from what I know, would involve an entire weekend and what we've talked about today and how we need to operate to be able to put a soccer field in. We need Sundays to be able to do church, because that's what we do.
Okay, good answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, for all that. My thought is you're using this for, you're saying it's gonna be for public use. What is to stop, you know, people from driving down Sierra College, see this open space, go park and start playing without, without use of your permission? How do you control that? Because now it's open to the public is what you're asking for, for public use. Is there a way to control that? And all of a sudden, there's ten families with their kids out there playing soccer.
I think it would be the same thing that every other park in our area deals with. There's the times where it's scheduled out, where teams are coming, they work out amongst each other. I think there's other times that it might be open and there would be kids there, and honestly, that we would be very happy to see that. We have our property open now. During COVID, the, I think it was the city asked us, could they use some of our parking? Because there wasn't enough space at Miners Ravine. That happens seven days a week. There's people always parking there. We allow that as part of that.
Those are also public parks paid by taxpayers. This is private property allowing people to come in there without permission. So that may bring up a liability issue too on your part. So how would you go about stopping that, or would you allow that?
I, it's, it's something that wouldn't be able to be managed to be able to not allow people to go there. We've addressed the liability aspect with our insurance provider before we ever took this step. So I think it's more gonna be just a field management use type of thing. And to be honest with you, there's probably some tensions we don't know yet that we would have to address as those times come up.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, I think. Was this, this light show and those sorts of things that went along with that light show, were they compliant with your current use permit?
No, sir, they were not.
Okay, so you can see why the community doesn't trust you. And you stand here and you tell us that you are acting or did act with, you know, out of compliance with use permit. So what is it that made you think you could do that?
To be quite honest with you, we were trying to balance the new limitations that were put in place during COVID by the governor of what could and could not be done, and we are all just trying to figure it out. So we own it. Absolutely, I stand before you today, I would stand before anyone and say we own it. And it's part of why I would apologize to our neighbors and how I did at the time.
Yeah, okay. So by the way, I think it's a great idea to have a yearly meeting. You've been in place since, since when?
At Bayside. I've been there for three and a half years.
I'm sorry, when's the church, when was the church put in place?
Church has been there for twenty years.
Okay, so I think it's a great idea after twenty years that you decide to reach out to the community and ask them their views. And in just the last two years, you elected to violate the CUP that existed for twenty years, right?
Correct. One thing I would say to you, Dan, is that one thing, although we have not done public meetings, we have been very purposeful to reach out on a one-on-one basis as often as possible with our neighbors. Times where we've gone over, we walked over, talked to them, we've taken gifts to our neighbors, we've done our best on a one-on-one basis. But I think what I'm saying today is the difference between a one-on-one, just talking to a neighbor, some of who are here today, who have had those conversations, is we're looking and saying, let's have a community forum and be very purposeful to make sure that we have those conversations.
Thank you.
Scott, question, you know, let's say tomorrow something happens, the public wants to get a hold of you. How would you suggest they do that? And who do they contact? How do they contact you if there's an issue? They want, they want to share an issue that they have or a problem, and they want to do it the right way?
Yeah, certainly. Anybody that reaches out, they reach out to just our normal phone number listed on websites everywhere. They reach out, and our team immediately gets it to the right person within our organization so that we can address it as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd also like to address a couple other issues, the compatibility or issues along Cabot Stallman Road, as well as the parking concern and the oak tree that has been brought up. First off, on the landscape plan along Cabot Stallman Road, there's, there are issues there where the planting further south on Cabot Stallman is very robust and hedge-like. And we will work with staff to make sure that planting that we make on the northern portion of this as a buffer to the residents on Cabot Stallman. We have a similar approach here where we're creating a hedge, a visual blocking or screening nature of, or landscaping of a screening nature. And we can even add some birmingham on that side, because it will be lower. Parking area will be lower than Cabot Stallman to try to block any headlights. The other thing as it relates to parking overall in the tree, there was, I was corrected in my comment earlier about our concern about spillover parking, which was accurate, but also at the time, staff was interested in having standalone parking, in other words, for the soccer fields themselves. Certainly, the commission has, within your purview, to prioritize the saving of that tree and to modify the parking accordingly. And we will take the will of the commission as it relates to that issue. I just wanted to provide additional explanation as to why we had as many parking spaces as we had. Again, with all that's been said this afternoon and and even past issues that need to be recognized and behaviors modified, hopefully this can be a beginning to that, but also recognizing, this issue came up in, at the MAC, because people mentioned, well, we don't, I don't, I don't play soccer. Other people don't play soccer. And there was conversations about trails and the need for trails in Granite Bay. My point then, and it is today, is that Bayside is a gathering space for the Granite Bay community and the South Placer region. It truly is. And it is part of the quality of life in the Granite Bay community. These fields will add to that quality of life. Recreational facilities add to the quality of life of the Granite Bay community. And so, again, on balance, we believe the impacts can be addressed adequately, and we can enhance that gathering space for the community. And for that, we would request your support of the project with the suggestions we made in terms of augmenting and enhancing landscaping, modifying the lighting hours, the commitment for the annual meetings, and follow through with neighbors. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Question, and I saw Andy was here and he's gone, but does the county place time limits on any of the county park facilities?
Dawn to dusk.
Dawn to dusk.
For the county facilities.
And you have no light at county facilities?
That's what I was told, yes. That's my understanding.
That is accurate, and they are posted. The hours are posted, dawn to dusk.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, or may I move it to discussion? Okay, I'm gonna move it to discussion for us, and so where are you guys at?
You know, I'm in favor of obviously more sports fields as an athlete and wish I could still play sports. My body doesn't let me. I'm all in favor of getting kids out. You know, as one teacher stated, you know, the kids on Mondays come back and all they've been doing is sitting on their phones. You could put ten thousand soccer fields out there. Unless the parents get them out there, they're not gonna go outside. I think that's a whole different issue. I do like making it available to have more kids get out there and go play sports. I am highly concerned about the neighbors, though. They have a legitimate concern. It is bright. I have a place in Penrin, and I could see that light show from Penrin. And yes, it can be annoying. And so I can only imagine living across the street how bad that could be. And so I can only imagine living across the street how bad that could be. And being the fact that you guys used it without permission is another issue. Um, I'm probably not in favor of putting the lights in just because again, concerned with the neighbors. I think there's plenty of daylight throughout the summertime um, for these kids to use that facility. Um, I would like to see the grass, but that's just, you know, me as a farmer, just like to see more, less synthetic stuff. But again, if you're going to be able to use this for handicap kids to run their wheelchair in, then yeah, I'd never even thought about that. So that's a great idea. So I guess that's my thoughts for now.
Yeah, so I think there's really, uh, there really is significant community benefit to this. Uh, obviously this is a very inexpensive way to get additional sports fields in the community and that's, that's, I think, a, a good thing. If I lived across the street, I know it would be a more difficult decision, certainly. I respect everybody here who made these comments and, and really appreciate them. And I, I, I've got to say, this is a classic example in my view of the community needing to get together and make sure that we don't have to call the sheriff or we don't have to call, uh, you know, code enforcement. By the way, just so you all know, there is no, there have not been a single code enforcement uh, complaint nor a single, although I think the sheriff's been called, uh, nothing that I could find anyway or that anybody could prove, provide to me uh, that indicated that we've made formal complaints. So for the community members, if you do have a complaint, I think you need to do that, it would be helpful. But the church should work with the community without a doubt. So I appreciate the fact that you're reaching out or will reach out in the future. I, I hope that, that becomes part of the equation. But anyway, I think there's, I think there's real community benefit to this. But I, I would offer, I will probably offer and y'all can vote the way you choose to, uh, obviously, but I will probably offer uh, three amendments. First is I'm not comfortable with the lighting. I, I recognize and I think you did a great job of providing, trying to provide some mitigation there. Um, but the fact of the matter is this field's going to be, it's acre, you know, it's an acre plus. I don't know what exactly it is, but this whole complex is going to be lit up so that across the street, especially in the Roseville area, you can be able to look right across the street and see all these, this, this light uh, out there. And I don't think that's necessary frankly at this point. I would offer this. This is a community that's bit, a bit distressed because it's gone through Del Oro, still involved there with Del Oro. And now we're going to lay this in their lap as well at this point in time. Perhaps five years from now, you know, after we've had an opportunity to kind of examine the consequences of this proposal, you come back again and you ask if we can put some lighting in. Maybe the answer would be yes there. Maybe we've discovered that we get along better with the Bayside, with the Bayside church now because people have had this issue of noise and that sort of thing raised to them. And so there's more community interaction and the people who have concerns, legitimate concerns across the street now feel much more comfortable. And maybe they would be willing to embrace, uh, you know, lighting. But at this point in time, I think it's a bit, a bit much to ask for that community to absorb uh, the lighting aspect of this. And I don't think that the community benefit that goes along with lighting those fields is such that it makes sense to put that in at this point in time. I do think the fields make sense from a community benefit point though. So I, I would offer an amendment on that. I will, I will do that. I also think that the hours are, although it would be somewhat taken care of if we don't do the lighting, I think the hours are excessive and as uh, uh, Andrew's pointed out, you know, or asked about, uh, dusk to dawn is typical. Uh, so we may want to put a, a cap on that. Perhaps, uh, you know, eight-thirty makes sense. That's what actually the MAC recommended. I think that's a pretty logical place to gravitate to. And, you know, and uh, and it makes it a little easier for the community to, to, to absorb this. And the third, I appreciated the viewpoints at the end there about the oak. It may seem like a small issue, but it's not a small issue to at least some community members. And so I would encourage reducing the, having engineering look at reducing the um, parking since it doesn't seem to be a, a water flow issue or anything, reducing the parking to save that oak tree. So those, that's where I am.
Okay, I guess, I guess I'll offer a little bit of forestry here. Being a forester. But any rate, oak trees are very sensitive to changes in their water regime. And uh, one of the problems that would come up is you go to a big effort to save this one oak tree and uh, like they described, if it's in a, in a hole and it accumulates water, I can tell you a blue oak is gone right at that point. That wouldn't happen, you know. Blue oaks are very sensitive to, I've seen it happen before, you know, I mean, in the summertime, we had a water leak in our neighborhood and I had a blue oak in the front yard. And all of a sudden, the leaves started falling off of it. And we got on top of the water leak next door and it came back, but if, um, but they are very sensitive and so, you know, you may go to great lengths to save the oak tree, but then you wind up losing it anyway. So that would be one thing that I would say there. You know, I guess I'm not opposed to the nine o'clock. I guess though, I think the issue of the parking lot, and I guess I'd have to ask is uh, is there some kind of a requirement that the parking lot be lighted? Because uh, you know, I could see people in the parking lot after dark and stumbling around. And so I don't know what, if, if the county has any requirements on that or not.
Rich, just a, just a quick comment on the parking. Um, it's going to be twenty-four, well, it's going to be, it's going to be all night long. So the parking lot will be lighted. The fields will not be though. If, if we did lighting in the fields, the fields would not be lighted all night. So the parking lot will in fact be lighted. Actually went and sat in the church parking lot um, about three days ago and drove to every corner as well. And, and I've got to tell you, I don't think it's an issue. And the church wants to match the existing lighting, you know, uh, basically from an architectural perspective throughout this parking area. There have been community members that raised concern about that to me, but I don't, I personally looked at it. I don't think it's going to be an issue uh, across the street or, or anywhere else. And so, yeah, it would be a security.
So we are distinguishing between the parking lot and, and the other question I have is, I think what I was hearing is uh, you know, in the summertime, they probably don't even need the lights because uh, you know, with the daylight savings, it's going to be light at nine o'clock anyway. So uh, without the lights though, in the wintertime, they'll be limited hour-wise in what they can do. And it seemed to me that the lights, the way they're designed, uh, really are not going to shine in the neighbors' eyes or shine on the, on the soccer field, so. At any rate, personally, I don't have an objective to the uh, lights in the soccer field other than I do agree that maybe nine, nine o'clock is better than ten o'clock.
Agree with many of the comments here. Uh, having experienced the lights over at Consumus College, which I was just amazed how they were focused, that I really don't have a problem with the lights. But I can also agree with the suggestion of operating the facility and then coming back later for amendment to the use permit uh, for lighting. You know, I think other than that, it's a, a facility that I think is needed from a land use standpoint. This was evaluated in the original E I R. The addendum is appropriate given what has gone on. So those are only my thoughts.
Yeah, as part of an institution that recently put in a soccer field in partnership with the public, you know, this is a good thing. It's been really good. I also know that it's not usable if the lights aren't there. You really can't use it. So I don't have a problem with the lights. I think nine o'clock makes sense. I think the public asked for that. But a lot of the issues, I think, were addressed. Uh, so I, you know, I, I think it's really neat that Bayside's willing to partner with the public in this.
I have a question maybe for their engineer or for George. Is it possible to take that parking where the oak tree is and switch it for where the recreational, uh, not recreational, but like for the sitting area is, the snack shack, all of that and kind of move this around? So that would still stay at a level field for the tree where you're not going to have to go build up a wall around it? I, I know what it, I know what that entails, I've seen it. So I'm just, you know, thinking right now if, if that can be swapped around and you don't have to change the grade level where that tree is and we still get to save that tree, but then use it maybe for shade or whatever and it would still drain? Because, you know, I'm sure the drainage is still going to come back. I mean, you're heading uphill towards Sierra College, so I mean, it's going to stay pretty wet unless you put walls in there or, you know, something in the ground, but.
I'll let Casey address the, the great issue. One quick issue just was reminded, Andrew reminded me that uh, the new state law about when schools start and you may be aware that all schools now will not start before eight-thirty A M. So I, I mentioned that only to get to Commissioner Herzog's comment that if you don't have lighting here in the winter and school gets out at four o'clock, the fields are really unusable during the winter months. So just a, another plug for life.
Uh, once again, Casey Feigert, T S D Engineering.
So your question about shuffling the parking back over to, toward the play area? Physically, yes, that is possible. Some of the concerns that soon as I move that parking to that location has to do with traffic. Remember there was the big issues about traffic coming in and then the movements off of that main road because that's the main access into the campus. So would add yet another drive aisle off that main entrance and more conflicts of turning movements and stacking distance. So that would be my biggest concern is how the traffic would circulate then.
And even just the building of the fields would change the condition for that oak tree?
Absolutely, because those, those fields are actually down in a hole. We do have some raised seating, so the spectators could have a nice view of it on that south end. So because of the fields, we block off that, you were talking about that drainage that comes through there, yes. It would definitely significantly still affect that location. My concern right now with making that adjustment would be more traffic than, than drainage.
I mean, people are still going to have to get in and out of there and, and use Bayside drive to go past that. I mean, they're just not going to have to drive as far. And if you just made the ingress and egress, you know, to the, across the street where like the, next to where the snack shack is, you're not going to have people coming in right at the stoplight. And I don't know how many parking spots you could put there, maybe a hundred. And I mean, it, it could be a concern, but I'm just trying to help save that tree for everybody else's use and maybe move as less dirt as possible. I mean, there's already a man-made waterway there, right, to drain that field? And I was understood that, I was told that there's going to be a pipeline put in there.
Yeah, where the pipe is to bypass the field so that the water doesn't go right through the middle of the field. That's correct.
So that's going to be changed to where? It's not going to go in the same location it's at now, the pipe?
Corrected. We just rounded around the outside edge of the fields.
Okay. How much fill is going to have to be yard in to put those?
It's on the um, grading plans. I can't remember the exact number. It was in excess of fifteen thousand yards.
So to raise the elevation, how much, three feet?
Uh, the fields close to three feet, but that parking area, like I said, was closer to six, seven feet.
That's why I was asking if you could swap that. I mean, we're already asking to take away parking because of, we believe that there's, you know, with eight hundred parking spots plus, that, you know, taking away twenty spots is not going to make a difference. But if you're able to move that without moving more dirt and fill to build a parking lot, then that tree is going to stay at level ground. And this recreational area, play area, picnic area, it doesn't matter if it's ten feet off the ground or ground level, right? So I would probably think about, see if they could be changed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm
Yes.
Trying to think this through and of course, you know, if, if the tree is going to be in a hole, it's not going to survive.
Correct.
Because the, the water will accumulate there and that's what the oak tree is just, they're not.
The root system gets compromised, yes.
So how much of the parking lot would you have to uh, change to make sure that that oak tree is on level ground?
In that, oh. Almost all of it. If you want to keep that tree at existing ground and not create retaining walls, majority of that added space, I'm seeing the pointer. Majority of that added parking lot area would have to be removed or relocated or.
That's why I was asking if it could be left on level ground. Let's just move this picnic area, snack shack over there. And maybe on a safety hazardous, you know, there's not going to be any cars driving by this little play area where kids are going to be running around. They're going to be kind of contained over this backside of the field and just leave cars on one side and play structures on the other.
Yeah, just, I just once again caution you on the stacking and the queuing distance. Getting people, the stacking further away from Sierra College is a, is a benefit for the, uh, all the traffic that stays in Sierra College. And you're getting the traffic onsite and then if there's any stacking or anything happening, it is onsite. It's not affecting Sierra College and a majority of the public.
Well, they'll be stacked inside that parking lot because they're not going to be able to get out. It's not like they're going to go drive around the, the street and turn around. That's just my concern. I mean, I just, I'm just trying to think on your side that it's going to be kind of helpful to be less expensive to keep that tree, which everybody seems to want. Those, those just my ideas, so again, I'm, you know, just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Well, I think, you know, I, I still was. I think if you go to great lengths to save the tree, you might lose it anyway.
Still a possibility of, of it being lost, yes.
And some of the other trees too, you know, if water, watering of the hedge along the edge of the road where the other trees are, that could be a problem from them too. So at any rate, with trees, you got to be careful because you try to save it and uh, can wind up not saving it.
This, this would not be, uh, you know, the only comment I have is this. I mean, we're going to have well over a thousand parking spots here. You know, but when it's all said and done, no matter almost what you do. So, you know, if there's a way to do this from an engineering perspective, I certainly defer to you, Rich, on this. I mean, I have no doubt that it's going to be hard to, to save and that sort of thing. But if it's, if it's doable, you know, it'd be a nice thing to do. I don't know how we write that into a, into a decision here. But uh, you know, I, I, I still don't understand, quite frankly, your parking um, viewpoints. I mean, you literally operate, provide information in here that's one hundred and seventeen to one hundred and seventy or something is the actual requirement. Let's, let's do two sixty because we picked that out of there. Um, and then on top of that, you've got eight hundred and sixty parking spots already, many of which are on the far side of the church, I freely admit that. But, you know, a lot of them are on the field side of the church as well. So it, it just, it, it just seems kind of strange to me that we need to throw all this parking in there and at the same time do something that, that some of the community members feel is unnecessary. So um, anyway, that's just a thought.
How many parking spots are in that one section where the tree is alone?
I, I would have to count them. I don't know offhand.
We have time. Yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, mirror off you. I just think it's maybe not necessary to
Yeah.
Go through all that effort to put more pavement down that doesn't need to be there. I don't know. For where I sit now, I'm in favor of the fields. I, I kind of agree with both my colleagues about the lighting. I'm kind of mixed about it. It, you know, it is nice to play at night. But again, my biggest concern are the people who live there and who've been there before this all started. I don't want to impede on their privacy. And, you know, that's why I had asked, is there possible to bring in a temporary one to see what would really happen in real life? You know, everything looks good on paper. I've seen everything look good on paper. I've had property that's been in two floods with twenty feet of water and engineers told me that this pipeline was going to work and it completely failed. So again, I like to see results from actual physical stuff being done. So I would, I would oppose, I mean, I would propose that we do the no lights. Do what we can to save that tree if they have to move this around and it has to be pushed off or what have you.
We have to admit that the presentation from the lighting
It, it was fantastic.
Structure is really impressive.
It was, I, I agree.
With the candellas and the amount of light that would come off at different angles. If you do lighting, that's the way you do it, right?
I agree. I, I mean.
And we have a guarantee. We have a guarantee.
So they don't have to turn the switch off?
I think, I mean, that's, that's the way I interpret that. With the guarantee that they'll meet those standards, I think the public With the guarantee that they'll meet those standards, I think the public should rest assured that the impact on them is is very small.
Yeah, one quick couple, it did come up a little bit. You know, I agree. I think that they they deserve a lot of credit for coming up with this technical solution. It sounds like a great technical solution, but there are other aspects to light pollution than glare. So the example is, I think, especially obvious on the on the Roseville side of this as you literally go up the tiered hill hillside. And now you have people who are looking straight out of their back doors at seventy foot high light poles, you know, with structure on them. So you have that aspect of it and all the way up. And now you also have what some people may consider attractive, others might not like it at all, people looking down on a lighted field. So I get it. It's not glare that they're dealing with and that's a good thing. But they are, this is all, that is, that is light pollution, if you wanna use the term pollution as well. So.
And I asked, I asked about that. I said, so the reflection off the field.
Right, you did.
You will measure and guarantee as part of that because I I understand that.
No, I agree, I agree. It's it, but again, it's not about glare and reflection. It's about just the fact that there's now this lighted thing in front of you until it potentially is late as ten o'clock at night. And and the light poles as well, which are another issue and individuals talked about their, you know, their their view. You know, and I don't know about the Cavett Stallman folks, but I'm a little less concerned about the Cavett Stallman folks because this this stuff is good. It goes straight down. But they aren't elevated, whereas on the Roseville side of the thing, they're all elevated and they are literally going to be looking into what is almost a stadium.
Like this view on the screen.
Yeah, they're gonna be looking into a stadium.
And one of the things.
And I'm not sure why.
One of the things you wanna keep in mind though is these lights are gonna be on primarily in the wintertime. And that's when, you know, people aren't normally sitting out in their patio in the wintertime. They're indoors. And so in the summertime, they won't be on. And, you know, if it gets dark at nine o'clock, then that'd be plain with this natural light at that time. Basically, that one factor in terms of the view that I would think about is the timing of the year. That's a problem.
You'll have those posted though too.
If the commissioners of mind, if I could add one thing about the lighting that Bob did not mention, but the the lighting will be installed consistent with the photometric analysis that was included in the addendum. The other thing that Bob mentioned to me is that those lights can be installed to actually meet night light stand, uh, night lighting standards. Anders, help me out here.
I think it's the dark sky.
Uh, dark sky standards, so that, again, which is something the county imposes on all residential and commercial development in the county areas is to meet that, at least residential, I know, uh, dark light standards. So that can be done and it is an enforceable performance standard. It's one day.
I I do, I do fear that if, I'm switching back to the tree, you know, I I don't, I don't know if not putting those parking spots in to save the tree would, I'm concerned that that it would die anyway. I think the development of the of the approving these soccer fields is also be deciding that this tree is not gonna continue. I think there's too much development that's gonna cause the change in the water for the health of that tree.
Especially the soccer fields are three feet, four feet above the trees. So no matter what you do, you have a basin.
You're gonna create that.
But if they put in the, if they put in the drainage prior to and it goes underneath, and I've I've run into this problem many of times where I've had to alternate or put in pipelines to drain a field to save part of an orchard to, because some things don't like wet feet like oak trees. But there is a way to drain that. I've done it myself and you could drain that and even have these fields elevated because you could put the drain underneath that field and that water will drain out of there. So that's possible. I don't think by putting those three feet high and all that water's gonna slope that way that, you know, it's naturally drains there now. The tree's been alive for two hundred years plus. But I think if you just put that drainage in and maybe eliminate that parking lot so you have, you know, less water there that would drain naturally, you're gonna save, I think that oak tree is gonna live forever, in my opinion. And I've grown over a million trees in my life, so I kinda know what I think might happen.
Is the issue the tree or do you feel like the parking is excessive?
Kind of both. I think the parking is probably excessive because the county was asking for parking to be adjacent to this and not take into consideration eight hundred and eighty-three parking spots and the, it's not gonna be used during church hours or uh, so that overflow parking or that parking that's adjacent to this field that people can walk from and put stairs there that I don't think you need to elevate that three to four feet to match the other parking spot. So kinda gives everybody the best of both worlds. Um, maybe saves them some money by not having to put in as much asphalt and it won't be as hot. And possibly to move that recreational facility to over there.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, go.
For for me, I would, I would have even raised this issue if insufficient parking would exist.
Right.
It it just is the nature of the beast and we would have to move on. But to me, it seemed like, okay, if your own study says you don't need this much parking and yet you're going to go kill a tree just because you want more parking in an area where you're gonna have over a thousand slots anyway.
Let's say, you know, we don't put that parking lot in or we don't approve the parking lot and the tree dies. We're all good.
Putting the parking lot in later?
Just not having, just that open space kind of not developed.
Well, or they could come back in a minute.
They could come back. If it turns out to be an issue, I mean, you're not gonna have, I I would think you're not gonna have that many cars for three fields of parking, even if you have people coming in wanting to wait to go to their next game and people leaving.
So in staff's analysis, was the parking, you know, was the parking reasonable? I mean, I I know you're recommending approval, but the parking, we we didn't, we had a pretty clear question, I think, from Commissioner Woodward about parking. And it'd be great to know, you know, what is really needed for the addition of these facilities?
Yes, so what we reviewed is is what Bayside proposed and I I had a conversation earlier with Phil about that. And one thing I noticed, I think, you know, he had some times where he's been to these type of events and if there's not enough parking, they're just gonna park wherever. Uh, so and so having adequate parking on site potentially could avoid somebody parking on, you know, a sidewalk or something not appropriate with that. That's one aspect. Having it available means people park in appropriate places versus parking the grass.
Isn't there no parking allowed on Sierra College in front of Bayside now?
Correct. I'm I'm not saying, it's not allowed, but sometimes it happens.
Well, then if they get towed, that's their problem. It's not allowed now, so we're not gonna allow it in the future. So I I don't see how people are just gonna park there. My fault. And you're not allowed to park there now. It's a red zone.
And my point is, the study that you're citing says a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and seventy-six and we came up with two hundred and sixty-two. Right? So I mean, I, it just kinda blows my mind a little bit. We're defending this by saying that we need between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and seventy-six slots, but we're gonna build two hundred and sixty-two. So, you know, the point here is we clearly, based on the study that's cited in the report, are building excess parking spots. It's not about anybody will park anywhere they want to. More than likely, people are gonna say, you know what? I don't feel like walking from there. I'm gonna go park here uh, in this spot, which people have done over and over again and the grass is gone and that means I can do it too. That's what's gonna happen. So it becomes an enforcement issue. But I mean, I'm just saying, your own report says that there's more parking being built than is necessary to meet the requirement.
If that's the case, can we amend it to have just what is recommended in parking? And maybe eliminate that and then maybe solve two problems. If they're only saying like Dan said, they only need a hundred and sixty-two and we're writing two hundred and seventy-two on the high end.
Hundred and seventy-six.
Then can we just approve it to have a hundred and seventy-six parking spots or whatever this area allow?
I mean, the way I see it is they're trying to do the diligence in making sure that there aren't parking issues if there's a large event and they're trying to accommodate the public. And if we put them in a tough pitch, a situation where there isn't enough parking on a day and there is parking on Cavett Stallman or frustration with the parking. You know, with what you said, they could eliminate the outer parking lot and still build, you know, this inner one and remove the tree. And so I don't know if, you know, limiting the parking, I I don't know what we're achieving. You know, on their property, if in the original build, they wanted this as a parking spot originally or it it helps accommodate, you know, addressing their impact on the community as a service to make sure this event doesn't cause overflow or more conflict. Um, and they're thinking ahead, I'd rather overcompensate. We've had issues when people undercompensate for parking. That's when we have issues. We haven't really had issues when they overplan. Uh, so I I'm lost at the concern with too much parking. But it's not really a concern.
There's, all I'm saying is is an additional, it's not even part of the study, right? So they're saying that there's hundreds, they need, they need a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and seventy-six to accommodate this. They wanna build two sixty-two, but there's also eight hundred and sixty other slots there.
There's eight hundred.
Now, on that side of the church, I don't know what the number is, but it's probably three or four hundred. Because I've driven that parking lot many times. I mean, there's, there's literally hundreds of parking spots here.
There's eight hundred and eighty-three parking spots. If you added just the recommended one seventy-six here at a thousand and twenty-nine parking spots, I doubt if you're gonna have a thousand cars for three soccer fields, even going in and out.
Well, I think there's more than one thing going on.
Well, they're saying that it's gonna be done after church, right? And I don't know what else happens at Bayside during the day. It seems like every time I drive by there, yeah, there's probably, what, a couple hundred cars in the parking lot? Um, you guys would know that more than us? If is that a corrected presumption that, you know, you probably have at any given time two hundred cars in there? So on Saturdays, are you gonna have all thousand twenty-nine spots where you're gonna need the extra hundred parking spots? So I don't, I don't think that that's, I, you know, for three fields, you're not gonna get that many. I mean, even if you have two, four, six, eight, ten teams in there at fifteen kids per team, that's not even a hundred cars. And so I don't think, I I, like the study says that these guys have a hundred and seventy-six on the high end is, I think, more than efficient. And that's why I asked, okay, so if we eliminate having them build this parking spot for now to save a tree, is there adequate parking along Bayside Drive and with the additional parking that's already there on the north side of the complex?
The only thing I would add is if there's one thing that Bayside has been sensitive about from the beginning is parking. Even just with the church services and church functions, it really, I couldn't, I I'll underscore what Commissioner Herzog mentioned. We could, we could lose spaces there. We would then expect people to park further away. The problem, the challenge then is people are gonna wanna park closer to those fields and then they're spilling over onto Cavett Stallman Road, which is what we're trying to avoid. I I and I really do and and I'm all about, I mean, I understand saving oak trees. Commissioner Johnson's comments. That's what you run into when you have difficult grades and you're trying to retain an oak tree and and you're trying to at the same time control that runoff and too much water getting to that that tree. And Commissioner Howey is well aware of those issues as well from a planning perspective. It's exceedingly difficult. And I understand the interest in in saving the tree. I don't, we don't believe we're overparked. We believe we're proposing parking that will keep people off of Cavett Stallman Road. And at the same time, the solutions for the tree just doesn't, don't seem to be good solutions that will ultimately absolutely assure its survival. That's the challenge.
Well, there's another five point seven acres that's unusable space right now. Is that? Is that correct? That five acres is to the left where it says five point seven acres, is that that open space that's there that you guys own? Can you use that? Parking, we have that. I mean, I know the creek kinda runs through there too, right?
That's what I was gonna state is there is a, or that's actually, there is a creek that comes through here and we have a pretty good offsite watershed that comes through here.
Right.
We actually had to, for Phil, we had to show the hundred-year water service elevation down through here. Uh, so we would be affecting that and more. This acreage and this use is for the day use and for the kids, I believe it was. Like a passive play area. It's not for vehicles and driving and that's the, that was not the intent was to try to get a bridge or a crossing across that creek in the wetlands area that comes down through here.
And that water runs from east to west, correct?
It does and it crosses underneath Sierra College right here. This is one of the big, big crossings besides the main creek itself. Nine-year floodplain system that's over here.
Right. But basically, that's unusable space.
Passive, kids run around playing, yes.
Really, they can.
I guess, you know, I, I guess I wanted to comment about our discussion here in that seemed like we're getting dangerously close to doing engineering and, you know, that's not really our job, you know, we're.
That's why I was asking the engineer. That's why I was asking the engineer.
We're getting dangerously close to doing that.
I have to do my own engineering.
And so, so I just cautioned us on that where, you know, we can look at alternatives, but at some point in time, we gotta analyze the proposal that's before us and make a decision.
In that vein too, there are a few different items that that your commission is discussing. It may be worth taking motions on those items, specifically field lighting, hours of field operation, oak tree preservation. Taking motions on those independently to see if there is a, an interest in setting those and then then depending on those motions, staff can work at crafting modifications to the conditions of approval and alignment with the motion.
Yeah, I'm I'm willing to do that if if the chair is ready. You know, and I guess these would be actually essentially amendments to existing use permit language, right?
But so it wouldn't be at this point, I guess what I'm proposing is is motions to get, I guess, a majority opinion on what they should be and then we, and then we will, during this meeting, we'll then start crafting a condition of approval that matches up with that. And then we will present that for the kind of final approval of your commission today.
Okay, well, I'm I'm willing to do that if the chair is ready.
Yeah, trick, take the attempt.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with the biggest gorilla, which is probably the lighting issue. And so I would propose that we ultimately move to amend the use permit to eliminate lighting uh, from this proposal for the field, not for the parking lots, for the field. And I, I'm not gonna re revisit everything, but the reason for that is, you know, that there's more light pollution than just the glare and that sort of thing. And so that's why I would, I would see if there's interest in that.
Kind of agree with that, just again, thinking on the neighbor's side of the fence. And I know all the studies are there, but, you know, the proof is in the pudding and, you know, I I love kids playing sports at night. I'd rather play sports at night than during the day, especially considering temperatures. But I have to take into consideration that people live across the street. When they bought this place, they weren't not, you know, it wasn't in in use for lighting for soccer fields. So to go change that on them, I don't think it's right on our part. So I would agree with you or second that, that we postpone the lights for now.
Yeah, and I also further mention that, you know, there is no lighted, there are no lighted fields in Granite Bay. It's typically dusted on in Granite Bay.
Correct.
You know, et cetera, et cetera. So there's, there's some aspects of this that go beyond the glare.
So might I just suggest that this be a tentative action so that when we bring forward a final action later today, then we'll have it more concrete?
Okay.
Yeah, I I'm not in support of that.
Yeah, I, I'm not in support of that. Uh, with, with all respect, I understand um the, the place you're coming from. I, I think it. We all understand, I, I think um. That this, the fields are a good thing, but they will be unusable. For a large part of the year because of no lights and, and the purpose of them to be used with, in, in community partnership. That will not be able to happen. And so I.
But right now, there's no fields at all.
Yeah.
At least we're giving them something. You know, I think we're, I'm trying to give the public.
I'm not, you know, I'm not arguing it. I'm just stating that for a part of the year to build this field, it kind of defeats the purpose.
I, I, you know.
Kind of like farming, I don't want to use my stuff.
Debate this too much more, but you know, they can always come back in a couple of years.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
So I think Commissioner Woodward had a comment, but then uh we do have a motion from Commissioner Woodward and I believe a second from Commissioner Di Mattei, so we would need a vote at some point on this as well.
So this is a, an amendment?
This is a separate motion.
So the motion as I had it was to uh take tentative action to eliminate field lighting.
Okay, we'll take a vote.
Okay, so tentative action to amend the use permit for the, lighting the fields. Is that correct?
To eliminate.
To eliminate the lighting until further. Notice or studies or.
Okay, and I have a first from Mr. Woodward, a second from Mr. Di Mattei, so a vote for Mr. Howgie.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
Mr. Di Mattei.
Yes.
And Mr. Herzog.
No.
Thank you.
So, sorry, go ahead.
The, the next item that I also had was hours of field operation, or we can uh discuss that, anything else with field lighting perhaps, limiting hours of, of field lighting.
That would be field operation, right? So I'm willing to bring that one forward as well.
So would we.
You do have discretion to modify field operation and um lighting to the extent you feel those are different.
Yeah, since the, uh, since the applicant has agreed to nine o'clock, I would make the motion we go at nine o'clock.
Didn't Mac say, did Mac go to eight thirty?
The Mac said eight thirty. Now, here's the thing, though. Uh, so the Mac said, um. Mac said Sunday to Thursday, uh, and Bennett, make sure I'm got this straight. I'm pretty sure I do. S- sorry? I think it was, I think it was Sunday, because that was a question that I had, actually. So Sunday to Thursday. Uh, ending at eight thirty was what the Mac said and then Friday, oh, I'm so, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was, I'm sorry, you are right, you are right. So it was, the Mac said uh Monday to Thursday. Ending at eight thirty and then Friday, Saturday and Sunday aiding, ending at ten. That's what the Mac said. So.
So can we change it? Well, we can amend it to say. Sunday through Thursday at eight thirty.
That would be my, that would be my recommendation.
Friday, Saturday till nine thirty.
Yeah, I made a motion, so is there a second or not?
Yeah, okay, I can't second.
Not yet. I have a question on it before I.
I said nine o'clock.
I have a question before we go into that. Is nine o'clock or this time, eight thirty, nine o'clock, is it? Play stops at nine o'clock or eight thirty or does lights out at eight thirty? Play stops at seven thirty, give you an hour to get in and out. So I would like to be specific on that. Is lighting turns off at eight thirty, so that means field of play must stop maybe an hour early?
So the way I understand the motion, maybe Commissioner Johnson can tell me if I'm off. This is with respect to field lighting, not the lighting to the parking lot.
This is for field lighting. That's why I'd asked, is field of play stop?
I said nine o'clock and the applicant uh was agreeable to that.
And was that seven days a week or the um Sunday night through?
Seven days a week.
See, I think, I, I think that should be modified to Sunday to Thursday, in my opinion.
Do you have a motion? I haven't heard a second yet, but that.
I'm not seconding because I'm not clear on hours of operation.
Since there's not a second, let me make a motion then that we restrict lighting uh to nine P M on Sunday through Thursday, uh, ten P M on. I'm sorry, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, no, Friday and Saturday, ten o'clock.
And Sunday to Thursday, nine.
Okay, I'll second that, so we can.
We have a first and a second. It's for a motion for the lighting. Not, not in field of operations, but the lighting.
Just to reiterate, this would be a tentative action until we can.
Correct.
Modify conditions of approval in accordance with it.
This is just for lighting, though.
Yeah.
This is just lighting, correct.
So, okay, let's just, yeah, it's fine. We got a first and a second.
Okay, tentative action to. Allow lighting Sunday through Thursday till nine P M, Friday and Saturday until ten P M. I have a first. I have a first from Mr. Howgie, a second from Mr. Johnson. So a vote for Mr. Howgie, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
No.
Mr. Di Mattei.
No.
Mr. Herzog.
Yes.
Thank you.
Given that.
Okay, uh, the next item I have would be oak tree preservation.
Okay, I, I'll make the motion that uh. That the oak tree uh. Would, would not be preserved and that's just based on the fact that uh there's a lot of effort to save it and it may not be savable anyway. So uh, that's my motion not to save it.
I'll second.
First and a second, take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Howgie. Uh, vote for Mr. Howgie, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
No.
Mr. Di Mattei.
No.
Mr. Herzog.
Yes.
Thank you.
Those were the three items I had. If there are no other items from the commission, I would suggest uh perhaps maybe a five-minute break so that staff can come up with the proposed conditions modified in accordance with those, those motions.
Do?
How much?
How much time do they need?
I think five minutes ought to be enough for us.
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. Okay. Okay, we're going to uh bring session back to order. Uh, and all that. Clayton, are you going to lead this?
Yeah, yeah, I can go ahead and start off. So after reviewing the conditions of approval based on those motions. I think the only modification that would be needed is to condition of approval A D B. Uh, and this is uh, so A D B, as it's written in the staff report, states, "Field lighting shall be shut off no later than ten P M or when fields are not in use, comma, whichever is earlier." And the modification would be to state as follows, uh, to strike that sentence in its entirety and, and reiterate the following. Field lighting shall be shut off no later than nine P M on Sunday through Thursday and ten P M on Friday and Saturday, comma. Or when fields are not in use, comma, whichever is earlier, period. Because your commission uh voted not to eliminate field lighting and not to uh take any further efforts to save the oak tree, there would be no need to modify conditions for either of those actions. I would just then suggest if there is a, a motion being made in accordance with staff recommendation that it reference the errata to the conditions of approval. And condition A D B is modified.
I'm sure you'll help us out if you don't say it right.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion that the uh commission adopt an addendum to the two thousand Bayside. Church certified environmental impact report for the Bayside Fields project that's set forth in attachment C of the staff report packet.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Do a roll call vote.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson. Was that second from Mr. Di Mattei?
No.
I'm sorry.
Me.
Oh, Mr. Howgie, thank you. So a vote for Mr. Howgie.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
Mr. Di Mattei.
Yes.
Mr. Herzog.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll further. That recommend from the planning commission that we approve the condition use permit modification for the bayfield, Bayside Fields project subject to the. Modified conditions of approval found in the attachment B of the staff report packet and the uh.
I can help with this if you'd like. I can help with this if you'd like.
Yeah.
And subject to the uh errata to the conditions of approval and condition A D B as modified earlier.
Okay, that's, that's what I meant to say.
Second.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Howgie, so a vote for Mr. Howgie.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
No.
Mr. Di Mattei.
No.
Mr. Herzog.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all of them?
Right, there would be, that's all for this item.
Okay.
There's, there's.
I'm going to do the appeal, yeah.
Yeah.
Just making sure we didn't have another one. So the decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing or provided comment or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within ten days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of six hundred and forty-one dollars. Well, that wraps up our agenda.
Other than saying thank you to Sue and we appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thanks, Sue. This has been a pleasure to work with you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I miss you.
Thank you for being here. We're going to adjourn this meeting.